You're good to go.
It's six oh nine PM. I'm calling to order a special meeting with the Deck of the Arts Commission. We have. We do have one public comment that came via email. This was sent to Mr. Hamby on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, from the Journey Dance Center. Subject is Arts Commission Public Comment, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. It's from Maeda Metzger, two one nine South Cedar Ridge Drive, Duncanville, sub five one one six. And I my apologies if I mispronounce your name. My name is Maeda Metzger, and I'm the owner of the Journey Dance Center located here in Duncanville. I'm here today to express my strong support for the proposed art grants. These grants are not just financial allocations. They are vital investments in the future of our community's artistic landscape and the development of our young talent. For our organization, the availability of these grants would be transformative. Specifically, these funds would allow us to significantly expand our scholarship programs, make art education accessible to a broader range of students who might otherwise be unable to participate due to financial burdens. This directly translates into more opportunities for expiring artists to hone their skills and pursue their passions. Furthermore, the grants will provide much-needed assistance in funding our annual recital. This event is a cornerstone of our program, offering students an invaluable platform to showcase their hard work and dedication. It is also a cherished community event that celebrates local talent and brings people together. The financial support from these grants would ensure the continued high quality and accessibility of this important tradition. Investing in these art grants is an investment in the artistic enrichment of our community, the development of our youth, and the continued vitality of local arts programs. I urge the committee to approve these grants. Thank you much for your time and consideration. And Alex, that is the only public comment?
That is the only.
So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the meat of this.
So if I could maybe start with the slideshow.
So I was gonna give you a little bit of lead in.
Oh, go for it, please.
So we're here today to review and consider making recommendations to the city council regarding arts grant applications submitted during the June twenty twenty-five grant application cycle. Our staff liaison, Alex Hamby, has some information regarding fund availability in the Duncanville Arts Fund. So, Mr. Hamby, you have the floor.
So I met with Richard Jackson, the managing director of Fiscal Services today, so I could make sure that everybody had a clear idea as far as the available funding. So the first thing that we went and looked at was what was currently in the fund. The current val- oh, wait a minute. Let me backtrack. This is the total amount that's being requested in all of these grants combined, as they were submitted. So it is eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two total dollars that is being requested across these fifteen grants. So during my conversation with Richard, I wanted to make sure that there was proper framework of how much money was available for you to recommend the city council spend on these grants. So we started with going into the fund ballot, into the account inquiry, and looking at how much money is actually in the account as of now. As of this morning, as of this afternoon, it was eighty-five thousand one hundred and four dollars and forty-four cents. That is two transfers from the hotel occupancy tax so far this year has made up that total amount. After you all went to city council, you asked for twenty thousand dollars for three events, which included the Juneteenth weekday, week-long event, the Hispanic Heritage event, and the Arts and Business Fixer. That leaves a balance of sixty-five thousand one hundred and four dollars that is not encumbered or is not committed by the, by your requests. So then, I asked him, what is a recommended total expenditure for this grant cycle? So the thing to keep in mind is while there is the eighty-something thousand dollars in there, the budgeted amount was fifty thousand dollars. That is how much was budgeted. So while there is money in there, it's how much is budgeted is what is available to spend. And you spent, you're spending twenty thousand dollars of that.
Is that budgeted for the grants, or is that budgeted for what?
That's just budget. Your expenses for so far. So because that, when they did the budget last year, they put in how much was the anticipated income, which was an estimate, and then budgeted an expense amount. So they just did a number that they predicted because of the fact that this is the first time there's an arts fund, first time having this, this body being involved in such a thing. At first, they picked numbers. So they budgeted fifty thousand dollars, of which twenty thousand dollars you've already asked for. As part of this process, Richard has recommended that I take a resolution of city council next month requesting appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from the arts fund, the unappropriated funds to move into the appropriated funds where you two apply to these grants, which would make the total amount sixty thousand dollars that's available to you tonight to recommend in these grants. Trying to make sure that I don't leave anything out of this. I was asked, when is the next budget transfer? That will be in August. So there will be funds for the next arts commission to work with from this fiscal year that they'll be able to work with for the next grant cycle. Next grant cycle, the application window's September first through the thirtieth. October is going to be when they review the, when they review those grant applications. And remember, that will be the new makeup of the arts commission. And then that will be, that will go to city council the month after that.
So that's important, because recall, we had talked about moving money forward to the next arts commission, so that they would start with zero. So that's something that won't necessarily be a burden.
That was gonna be my question. If we save money for the next fiscal year, what, will that come from the sixty?
But there's another deposit being transferred.
It's actually gonna come from an August transfer.
So are we keeping some, saving some back for the next?
That is, that does take care of it. So the August, this is, the sixty thousand is what is available now after the appropriation of the funds that's currently in the balance. The next fund transfer that'll happen in August will actually help the next arts commission in that next grant cycle.
So as of right now, realistically, we're saying that about forty, around forty-two thousand dollars each deposit's been made. There's been two deposits made, correct?
Hmm, yes.
So we're averaging, so we're thinking about that average for August to come in for the transfer is gonna be around forty to forty-three thousand dollars, something in that, based on the last two transfers?
He said that that's not easily predicted. I mean, you can, you can guesstimate, but not gonna know until it comes in, because again, that depends on the hotel's business.
How much was the first transfer?
Um, I have to look it up. It was, I mean, you're, you're right. But the next transfer, there's no way to know exactly what that dollar amount is, because the first transfer was higher than the second one. The third one could be either higher or lower. It's just, I mean, the.
There's still be some surplus going into the.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on what Mr. Hamby just discussed?
So we have. You mentioned that they, you requested that the council, or you will be requesting maybe the council move an additional thirty thousand. What did I plan for that?
It'll be, I'll be taking a resolution for them to consider to appropriate thirty thousand dollars from the unappropriated funds. So that will add to the thirty thousand dollar balance that is still sitting there of appropriated funds to bring you to sixty thousand.
So Ron's calculation of ninety-one thousand.
Is incorrect.
It wasn't quite correct, because they.
No, I put it, I put it under there. It was incorrect.
Okay.
And I didn't bother to send another email, because it'd be another email.
The current, the current total is eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two.
I got it.
I put two in there. I did a lot. All right. Any other questions on what Mr. Hamby is? Okay, so first of all, three. I am a little housekeeping. Mayor Pro Tim Gooden said she was not gonna be able to attend tonight because she wanted us to be able to really lean in this without any counsel looking over her shoulder. She says good luck. She trusts our arts commission. And I am so happy to see a full table. I want to tell you right now, Mr. Hamby has done a lot of heavy lifting to make this work. I want us to be able to move forward with confidence that what we're doing today has never been done before. Whatever your experience is with DCDC or city council, this is new. Whatever your experience is with other foundations, or your bank, or other people, this is new. Right now, there's a lot of attention on this policy because it's a really good policy. So what we're doing tonight will be test driving this. So I want us to move forward in confidence that if, if we don't know what we're doing, or if we get confused, we talk about it. We open. I'm confused. If you haven't had a chance to read all the applications, or if there's something that you haven't read, tell us. It does not mean your voice is any less important. It does not mean your opinion's not less important, but it helps us understand volume. Alex has been really trying to figure out what the process to make this work. But understand today, tonight, this is not gonna be a conversation about process, and it's not gonna be a conversation about policy, because that's not what this meeting is about. What I would ask you to do, as you go along, and if there's something about the process that you think can be improved, that you didn't like, that bugged you, write it down while you're thinking on it. Write it down while it's hot in your memory, because we're gonna have an additional meeting to talk about the process, the policy. Imagine that now that you had a chance to use a policy, you've probably had a chance to figure out, maybe we need to go back and look at some things on it. So to get us started, you know, we went off into our little private spaces, and there was no precedent. And we just kind of started figuring out the way that we could do this based on our own life experience. So what I would like to do is, I would like first to go around the table and just really briefly explain the process by which you reviewed it and how you made determinations. Do not go into detail. We'll talk about that. So this way, it'll give us a baseline on which to, to just, to move forward on. Once we've done that, and we all kind of figure out what are, the way that we worked, Mr. Hamby, the, don't get these out of order. The applications are alphabetical order from the top. He has some slides we're gonna go through. As we move forward, I'm gonna ask each one of you, just go around, because it's gonna be a long meeting. We all need to talk, to introduce the application. If you haven't read the application, it's your turn to look. Just let us know, and that's okay. Something to think about. Did anybody watch city council last night? Was anybody there? So you'll notice, if you watched it, what irritated the city attorney more than anything?
Having something on the record.
Right.
What was it?
Having something on the record.
He had mentioned opinions are wonderful, but they don't matter. It's what's on the record. So we don't have an arts policy. We don't have a strategic plan, and we don't have a cultural plan. What we have is our funding policy, and what we have is the Texas Two-Step. That's the hot evaluation. Those are the only things that are on the record for us to consider. So as we move forward on this, we have to make recommendations to the city council in a way that they make decisions. So if there's an opinion, if there's a comment, if there's an idea, if you're able to cite anything in the policies, one of those two policies. If you've used like something else, another document, if you could tell us when you do it, so it's gonna be on the record. So when Mr. Hamby presents to the city council, and there's a question about something, Mr. Hamby can go back and say, well, this was the source material from which they used. This was on the record. And they can go back and say, well, page ten on this policy, on the city funding policy states, so this was the conversation. So what we don't want is to have Mr. Hamby from the city council and not have him prepared, and have the city attorney yell at the city council, because then they won't trust our recommendations ever. Does that make sense? Okay, so what I would like to do is, I'll get the ball started, and then I would like, I just wanna know everybody's process, and that way we understand. If you haven't noticed, I tend to be an over thinker. I went through all the applications. I am a memo writer. I, I didn't take any consideration of my personal opinions or what, you know, what I liked about something. I didn't look at the artistic integrity. I looked at, this was the funding policy. This is the hot two-step. Could I justify this and this at the same time? And then, for every one, I wrote this memo. This memo's actually to you guys, but because it would look like I was trying to persuade your thinking and your opinion, I did not forward it to you before. And so what I did for myself, because I will get inside my own head and forget what I'm thinking about. I have in there why I think it's eligible for this, why I think it's eligible for this, why I don't think it's eligible for this. And I have this document, so if we wanna leave it, so when we're done, I can leave it part of the public record. And if somebody wants to go and read my notes, I can read my notes. So that was my process. I'll start with the vice chair, and if we could just go around.
Well, I took old-school notes for each one. I used two documents. The, the policy, dark policy. And I focused on the requirements, the eligibility, the fund limit, the uses requirement, those for each type. And then I used the Texas Two-Step, but I was really still kind of confused on the first step, which is the beds, heads and beds. And so page seven of this unabridged version, I really focused in on, and I'd like to share some of those when it's appropriate. But that was my process. I looked at those two things. And if it, you know, did, did these things, and it followed the Texas Two-Step, that was what I based my thoughts on.
That's why.
So I kind of did the same thing as Mac. I just went and utilized the policy we've already put together, and I kind of compared that to the type of application it was. And I really kind of, there are certain things, of course, we're gonna all like one with the other or whatever. But I really wanted to keep it centralized in qualifications and requirements that was set forth, and to make sure that they're aligned in those.
That's it.
I used weighted categories for the, for the two-step and for the artistic merit. The others were not as important and were smaller. And that helped me get to a conclusion. I think I would redo the weights. I don't know that they're, what I would use again, but it was helpful. That's our process. Thanks.
I used Marianne's rubric, and particularly focused on the Duncanville connection. I wish I had, I had several questions about locations, and I wish I had had time to drive around and see some of these, like where the mural would go on this first one. And so I did read them all and, and think about them. I didn't really score them, though.
That's okay. Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, so I was able to glance, not like thoroughly, but I was able to glance through most of these applications. And the thing that I was looking for was uniqueness and how it involves other communities, and how that could, I guess, put heads in beds, you know? I kind of would think about that. Is it a more than one-day event? Or even if it's a one-day event, is it an all-day event that will maybe persuade people to stay here and eat dinner, and maybe just get a room or something? Who knows? But that was my process.
Thanks, sir.
Sam?
Yeah, I went through the PDFs on the computer. I think I was missing a couple, probably lost in the many emails. It's, it's okay. Because some didn't really count up how much they're asking for. In the papers that I found. I, you know, I, I based it on the hot, whether or not it qualifies based on my understanding of it and the documents, trainings we've had, and the penthouse, and all that kind of stuff. And trying to understand how it would affect tourism in the community, each application. And also, I thought about, well, what if this is the first of an annual thing? And in the future, it might become a really big thing and really attract tourists and overnight stays. But if it's not supported from the beginning, how can it get to that place where it can be big enough to, in the future, you know, be a, be a thing? And so I considered that when I was trying to think of it. I had no, I didn't do any totals on the numbers, so, so I didn't know, you know? Just that was my criteria on whether or not I added that in, you know, from where then what we can afford.
Thanks, Sam. Amy?
I'm really similar to Mac. I really tried to think through what Chin said, our, our knowledge of hot funds and how they are supposed to be applied and used based on the presentation that was done by the person who's in his office and my own knowledge of it. Something in our guidelines as well, what we've set forth is the eligibility requirements in, in the application. I've been, I didn't score them either. I didn't know, we have a few of, how we're gonna approach this specifically tonight. And certainly, I threw them in. Has, I think, I think specifically, I think one of our target themes got to be to remember that if you're using the hot funds, it has to promote at least the effort to put heads in beds has to be there. I remember the previous director of economic development telling me, it's hard, you're predicting. Is it going to for sure? You don't know. It's kind of like not being able to predict the timing, but does it have a likely that it's gonna put heads in beds? I think that's really, to me, that's gonna be really a specific criteria, because it's always been through the years that's important for hot funds.
Thanks, Angela.
Okay.
I read through all the applications and basically look at our funding policy and the hot funds. And I just used the matrix that Marianne just, to divide mine up. And then, as I read through it and did my little assessments and so forth, I did my internal scoring.
And, and as you're hearing how everybody does things, I've already heard things that people would want to improve. Remember, write the notes down, because we're doing this. So I was telling Alex a joke today. I got a call from Marianne. She says, well, do we have a rubric? I said, did you make a rubric? No? Then we don't have a rubric. Mac calls, do we have a checklist? Did you make a checklist? No? Then we don't have a checklist. So it's like, whatever we create here tonight is, is what's gonna set the standard. So does everybody, it sounds like everybody kind of understands how we approached it. In your notes for the next meeting, if there's anything that you found frustrating about accessing the information, be sure to put in your notes, because we'll need to talk about that in the middle. So would you like to go ahead and get started in the applications? Okay.
These slideshows are very, very short. First one is Beacons of Light. This was a public art grant request. The project summary, which I'm sure you've all read. Kalen Y. McGuire of Kalen McGuire Media will paint a mural on the side wall of the Texaco Building property near Brandon Bergen Immediate School in Duncanville, Texas. The artwork reflects the youth of Duncanville as rising champions in the community. As students pass by this public art on their way to school, they will be reminded of their championhood, which can positively influence their academic performance and behavior. In addition, the mural is projected to inspire, enrich, and empower the city of Duncanville. It will be esteemed by both citizens and tourists as a landmark that celebrates the spirit of the community and serves as a catalyst to support Duncanville's 2040 comprehensive plan and had seen cultural arts and economic development throughout the city. The request, the total project budget as put in the application was four thousand fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The requested amount is three thousand dollars, which is in alignment with the max, with, with the top request for that grant category.
Next question.
Ms. Brown?
In her description, she has put forty-one inches by forty inches. I'm assuming that she just used the professional inch marks correctly? Am I correct in that assessment?
I don't know. So he's a guy, too, by the way.
If you stand up real close to it, it looks different.
So I will, so I wanna, here's how I approached this, and then I would like first to all, I want every voice on this. Remember, he was the gentleman who came at the last meeting, spoke. I looked at two things, and I tried to justify it based on the two things. I said, based on hot rules, is it eligible for funding? I said, yes, the proposed mural project qualifies under the two-step. I said, identify ways it's eligible. Public art is a tourist, tourism asset. I also cited the Duncanville 2040 draft to use cultural tourism aligned with the comprehensive plan. By explicitly branding the mural as a civic symbol where champions rise, it connects to the city's broader identity, particularly Duncanville's national reputation as city of champions. This gives the mural symbolic tourism value, especially for families visiting, for sporting events, community festivals, or cultural program. Continuous passive tourism attractions. We've all talked about this, the function of a mural being twenty-four seven visibility and the location on Main Street. Digital engagement with the tourism. He included a QR code leading to the city's website or the owner's profile, which provides trackable data that can measure external engagement and tourism behavior, even if the mural is not itself a ticketed attraction. The data strategy directly supports the kind of accountability expected from hot funds, as Ms. Jackson talked about, the trying to make it work. The applicant references models like Miami's Winwood Walls for public art, catalyzed tourism and economic development. I went ahead and, as an intellectual experiment, and to identify what would make it ineligible, I thought, well, if the project did not attract or attempt to attract tourists or overnight visitors, if it were not accessible by the public, if it prompted political, religious, or private, non-public content or events, if it required, and if any of his documentation's were missing. I went on to identify whether it is eligible by city arts funding policy. I said, yes, that it does meet the eligibility. It takes place in Duncanville. It's publicly accessible. It includes property owner permission. It falls within the budget cap. It includes visual art as a primary artistic medium, and it provides a complete application package with the narrative, budget, and documentation. And I went ahead and documented what I thought were the merits based on hot eligibility. Tourism alignment. Project is situated in a visible, frequently-located location. Described as part of a larger effort to stimulate the economic and cultural development is aligned with the Duncanville 2040 comprehensive plan. Community impact, the theme, youth empowerment, civic pride is rooted in the city's identity as city of champions. And public engagement, use of the QR code to track mural engagement. So you see, that was my approach to look at all of these. I looked at the policy and tried to apply the policy to the project. That was my approach. So I just wanted to open up. I'm not gonna start every conversation like this. I just wanted to start off, just to get the ball rolling. So if we could all take moments, since this is our, actually, our very first application to look at, talk about what you think about it, the process, how it aligns with. Go for Tim. Go.
Did he send examples of his work?
He did not send any samples, but I've decided to, and you can tell me if you want me to do this as best I can during this meeting. He does have an Instagram, and this is one sample that's right towards the top of his.
It's complex.
Yeah.
And at the Juneteenth, one of the Juneteenth events he participated in, he actually did a painting or drawing during the event.
That first one? Yeah, that I'm sure, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
While we were there, he did, when these people came up to talk to him, and things like that. They're artistic.
Anyone else talking across this, and so, but if, I mean, it seems like if, if there's ones that we all feel have merit, we could just quickly, like yay or nay, go down, you know, and then as a group. And then, then we could look at totals, start looking at total amounts of the yays, and go, wow, okay, now we gotta really be discerning. So maybe we could, you know, in terms of a way to get through this effort.
Does anyone wanna talk on this application? You wanna go with the yays and the nays? How do you wanna do this?
I just had a comment. So I'm wondering if he maybe means forty-one inches, which would be about three feet, and by fourteen feet, because this dimension would be very small, if this is what he means.
That was my question.
But nobody knows, so we're assuming. And generally, if we picked a mural, we wouldn't see more samples. But his description is interesting, but it's a little vague, you know? I think he, he would depict youth stylized and realistic, sort of maybe in the style that we. I think he would depict youth stylized and realistic, sort of maybe in the style that we just saw.
This is a question based on the policy. If anybody can recall, does anything in the policy recommend a procedure? Because we don't have a mural policy. It may come in August. So right now, they're like to answer Anne's question, what's going to be the process? Whether the evaluation, well, there's not a policy for that. There could be. So we'll have to make funding decisions without a policy directed. So we just need to make sure that the application as written covers these two things with the expectation when a mural policy is adopted, that that policy can be carried out by the applicant.
I thought a couple of things for this specific one. I thought, and most of these people have Instagrams and stuff. I did take time to look at some of their work or if I wasn't sure what they did. I looked at their company. I looked at their engagement online. I also Googled them. And what I really liked about this one is it reaches our youth. And that's one of our requirements for a comprehensive plan. It also gives us a chance to collect some KPIs. And I think that's really good for us, right? Because that QR code may be something that goes directly to the city, but it also may be something that we want to connect and goes directly to a DAC survey or any information that we want to collect so we can probably steer that. And I thought that it was realistic just far as the price of murals, right? The average mural's going to cost anywhere between three thousand and sixty-five hundred. We just did a mural last month at, let's see, it's a permanent mural, right? And so that's around the price just for the average one, right? And so I think that that's a really good price for what he's asking. Asking them, more importantly, I think that it aligns with making the city look good and caring of other kids, right? And so I think that kind of helps us out far as these making service for our comprehensive plan and also the requirements that we've had. He stayed within the guidelines of that. So I think it's a really good thing and I don't think it's a guess. So that's what I got.
Your turn.
I'm concerned about, I like this one. I like this application. But my concern has to do with all of the applications and it's the hot, the hot fund. According to what I've found out.
Do you want to read it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right. So I'm not going to read the whole page, but there must be likely to do, wait, let's try that again. Two things have to be in place for that first criteria, the heads and beds. One is to directly promote tourism, which I think it does, or most of them do. But the second part, it says, and directly promote the convention and hotel industry. Individuals planning or traveling to a different, from a different city or coming for an event, those type of things. But it needs to directly tie to the hotel convention activity as well as the tourism. And then it says here, if the funded event or facility is not reasonably likely to directly enhance tourism and the hotel convention industry, local hotel, hot tax cannot be legally used. And then it says, they need to have a plan for how they're going to market to attract tourists and hotel guests. If the entity does not adequately market its events to tourists and hotel guests, it is difficult to produce an event that will effectively promote tourism and hotel activity. I'm almost done. The funded event held in a venue that likely attract tourists and hotel guests. I'm sorry. A city or delegated entity should also consider whether a funded event will be held in a venue that will likely attracts tourists and hotel guests. A community center is much less likely to attract tourists unlike a local performing arts venues, museums, or civic centers, which are likely to attract tourists and hotel guests. So if an event is in a community picnic, a local parade, an education class, or similar type of event is not likely to attract tourists and hotel guests. So my, my fear that are weak link is the hotel part. They're not, if they're not booking a lot of, what do you call it? A block of hotel rooms, then it's not likely to be considered.
That's what Amy was speaking to.
Well, yeah, and I think that, as I've always understood it and been told a lot of times, even one night qualifies well for the arts. But I'm kind of with you. I think it's a fantastic application of what bringing the arts to Dunkinville. I have a hard time getting there on putting any head in bed. I mean, basically, unless we thought they were going to bring an artist who was going to stay in one of the hotels for a night or two while they were painting it, then we check that box. We've got it. Because they don't really have to do a block. That's always one of the questions. And that's one of the things that's been in there for years. So they ask if you're going to, and I always say, no, I'm not going to do a block, but I am going to put heads and beds. And so if they were, if they could just show, and I think the other thing that, and I don't know how this affects policy lines. I'm not really sure. I know in previous years when it was City Council, sometimes they would say, I mean, we love this ask. We have more information, perhaps it could be reconsidered the next grant cycle. If it's not approved tonight, I'm not, I'm not recommending that or not, but I'm saying I don't know if we allow for that. But I think it's a fantastic proposal. I think we need more information about how it might impact hotel stays in order to really make sure that it qualifies.
I agree, but I also think too, like the location where this is at is, you know, Main Street. That's where all of our events happen. It's going to be near our cultural district. It's near like our restaurants, the local restaurants and stuff. So things will be happening. People will take pictures. People will think like, oh, that's cool. Let me stop by, bring other people. But also that QR code could lead to like our city of Dunkinville website and things to do. And so they automatically get the list of what they can do while they're, while they're here taking pictures and, you know, maybe, I don't know if that counts, but I would, I would think that would kind of count toward like hot funds maybe, you know, so.
I think it would be difficult to have anything that is public art be just very directly key to that. But he's done a good job in explaining why and what. He uses the word tourism a lot and has a comparison in Miami. So I think for what it is, I think that's as good as it's probably going to be.
If work could be at a school, I think it's really important to realize that, you know, you've got to think about the tournaments. Whether it's volleyball, whether it is football or anything like that. You have people that are going to come in for that. Just being a coach too, also being a mom. You know, you go to all these other cities for these tournaments and stuff like that, whether it be on the weekend, you know? Lots of you do stay because you don't feel like driving back from work, don't worry. So I think that, just in my humble opinion, I think this is a great testament to what we're looking for. I think murals is something that we've talked about for three years. We still haven't got the, we're up on the, what is that thing called? And we still in, right? But so I think that this is the thing about it is what we want to do is employ people to do the things that we haven't been able to do. Right? And we want to make certain that we are turning around and turning up the heat on being able to say is, is guess what? We can't do it. The teamwork makes the dream work. And being able to say is, is guess what? We're allowing these people in our community to help us not only look good, but to foster a positive environment and speak positively about the city of Dunkinville. So to me, I think that that's the key and that was the last vote for me.
I like to make a motion recommending that City Council fund the Beacon of Light project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there any questions or discussion on this? Okay, go ahead.
I'm all for it if we can figure out how to get past that and hotel.
Question is, who will be the person that ultimately says this qualifier? Kind of thought, first I thought it was going to be economic development, but then they removed that to us.
Right.
So isn't it our job? And then, do we have to have a lawyer to really come up with the final conclusion here? I'm not sure.
So after we make recommendations, would it get the staff to make sure the recommendations are? There's no red flags before it goes to City Council?
The Arts Fund policy is that you're making recommendations to the City Council. Whether you eject or reject or approve, whether you upvote or downvote, recommend or not recommend, it's going to City Council. They're the ones who are going to make the decision. They're the ones who are ultimately going to write the check.
So someone on council will be the one to to decide if it's actually fits the hot fund criteria?
It will take it through further before it goes to City Council as it goes.
Correct?
I'm sorry?
City Council makes the last approval?
City Council makes the last approval on both of them.
Because I'm saying, the City Council, even though we're recommending everything, it goes to City Council and they make the final decision on all these, correct?
Yes, per the policy, if you recommend or don't recommend, both are going to go.
So someone has to bet then before City Council, it gets to City Council, someone's going to be.
The city attorney is going to look at everything that's on the agenda. City management, the city attorney looks at everything that goes on the agenda before it goes to City Council.
But I do, I'm sorry. A question about our process. If we vote yes, say, if, after our consultation about all of them, might we consider adjusting the totals based on what we've?
You can make a motion.
Well, you may turn around and recommend something and say, hey, I approve them. Instead of ten thousand dollars, I think that we should approve them for seventy-five hundred, like for something.
I understand that, but as we add up all this and we come to the end of it, is it possible to go back and make some adjustments? Or is it, once we vote on it, it's set, the amount is set?
Well, I think by the time we get into this process, we're going to know exactly how much, how much we're going to recommend. And so how do you guys want to do that? Do you want to, I mean, there's still a motion and a second on the table. Tim had mentioned creating yays and nays stacks before we vote on it.
I think we just, this is just my, I think as we're going through here, like some of these are going to be a little bit easier than others, right? Because they're kind of within the things that we've been talking about for our last few years. It's not like we're not prepared for this step. We have, we've taken three years. It's been almost three years, right? And so I think that for this process to make it easier, we can just go through them. And then if we recommend, if we didn't say, hey, I know they're asking for ten thousand, but we are going to, you know, let's go for sixty-five, right? Let's just do it on each application. Because I think that this doesn't have to be a long drawn out process. I think that everyone's probably taking a look and I think that we're going through them. Alex, the notes are awesome and you know, you've been doing the most, so you're going to absolutely, right? And so, but I think that this is like important, right? To, for us, to be able to see the visibility of our foot turn around the city.
Because when Alex told us, I mean, for me, when Alex told us the amount that we were working with to give them, I did just that for myself, made some adjustments to
Yeah.
To some of the grant request proposals. So for me, if I make a motion, I may change the amount and then you all can vote it over there.
Okay.
And remember, we make motions in the positive. Or do you want to, what's your, you have any more, you want to talk more about this?
Can we move this?
Well, I still think there needs to be the caveat of, he has put forty-one inches by fourteen inches. And we need to make sure legally that somebody checks with him because
But that's not a part of the policy as far as size.
No, but
You don't have a policy on size?
But we wouldn't do it, would we?
Well, I mean, I think it's safe to assume that he, forty-one inches, that it's not, it's safe to assume that.
I just mean legal, legally.
Yeah, but I think that the main thing, I don't, this is just me, but I think that there is not a policy on size anyway. I would think that no one's making a forty-one inch something on side of a wall in school. But I definitely get that, but I think that once like we approve this and it goes to City Council, right? The City Council would require certain things, correct? So, so say, let's say this gets approved, Alex, how does that work? The City Council would say, okay, we, we're going to say, okay, this gets approved. And then what is the next step of the process?
So this is what I proposed to City Management today. Is that for the August fifth meeting, I will bring to them the, during the work of briefing session, the resolution so that they can have that in mind for the next August meeting. Then, based on your recommendations, for or against, I'm going to invite all fifteen to come and to the briefings and presentations portion of the open part of the meeting, the regular meeting. And give them a two, two minutes to make a slideshow presentation and all of that. That will give an opportunity for any of your concerns. I could, I mean, and you can, I would think, add to your motion, I recommend, but you can always put in a, but we want this or we want this addressed before it goes to council. Or you can put in your concern, your thing that you want taken care of. But that'll give me a chance to say, when I reach out to them and say, okay, you're going to the next step. I'm inviting you to do your, your two minute elevator pitch.
Two inches of feet, right.
Can, the Arts Commission was concerned about the measurements that you put on it, on your thing. So that needs to be addressed before it goes to City Council because that will be in the packet that City Council will read.
What do you all think about that?
I like that.
Because my thought is the owner of the building who he is working with is going to want it nicely for you all. That's just saying he just worked it out.
Yeah, I think it's a good situation. But I also think if you could put those situations under, like Sarah said, I know from my past experience, if we could, in that QR code, if we know that it's going to link to the city, have, have, you know, things to do, places to stay, then that checks that tourism, that checks that hotel's box. If the theater has a page, plan a trip and it's a link. You click on it and it opens every hotel in a different window. Every place to stay with a way that you make the reservation. And I have been told that that's, we've done our best, we've done our diligence to give people
I like that, right. Can't guarantee that you
You can't guarantee that.
But you're promoting, you're promoting the tourism.
If that QR code, which I think is a cool thing, if that QR code, if that could be a stipulation as we're asking for the right dimensions, we just need, we need, it must promote the hotel industry. It must link to something, whether it's the cities or they can link to the theaters pages. They can link to something that says, here's where to stay in Dunkinville.
Do you want that included in the motion?
I don't know how we're doing that. That's what he said. He said we could add it to the motion or just the motion. But I did think that that would cover everything then.
So there is a motion.
Make a firm amendment and then I can accept it.
I have no idea what she's talking about. Do you know why she? Would you like to do what she's suggesting? I always do what she suggests.
I think the motion is fine. And if I, then I can accept it since I'm the maker of the motion.
Yes.
So I'll accept a firm amendment about adding the hotel to the QR code.
And the stipulation.
And stipulation, as stipulation of size.
So do you want to?
That's it.
Okay.
Can I ask that be restated all the way through?
You can ask.
Quickly some words.
I make a motion recommended to the City Council that we fund the Beacon of Light arts project in the amount of three thousand dollars. With the caveat that the QR code include hotel, links to hotels and that we confirm the size of the mural, correct?
And the change of the mural.
Thank you.
And does the second still stand?
I didn't second.
Oh, I think it did, I'm sorry. And Ted, I'm sorry.
You seconded?
Oh, yes, I seconded.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that? If there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Okay, please hold.
Our first bill.
I know. We just made our first recommendation.
You got some money.
Are you good, Alex?
We're getting them here.
Uh, no, not yet.
And it's to be done at nine tomorrow morning.
We're going to, we're going to vote.
Okay, thank you.
So, next.
Okay.
Off the top top, let's go.
Okay, the next submission is Brown Girls Do Ballet Photo Project. It is a single project support grant. Project summary, the Brown Girls Do Ballet Photo Project is a visual storytelling series by photographer Takeo Wallace McMillan that highlights the strength, grace, and identity of young dancers of color. Through portraits taken in Dunkinville and surrounding neighborhoods, the project captures dancers in both traditional and non-traditional spaces, centering them in a narrative where they are celebrated, visible, and empowered. The resulting images will be exhibited publicly to promote community pride, cultural reflection, and expanded representation in the arts. Here is the budget that was submitted with it. And this is, breaks down the line items. Here is a photo from the, her work. And then if I've got a copy, it's not a great print, but this is a sample of her work that can be passed around. it's not a great print, but this is a sample of her work that can be passed around. So, the total projected budget is eight thousand, and the requested amount is three thousand. And again, this is a single project support grant with, uh, per your policy discussions, that is, uh, funding limit up to three thousand dollars for a first-time applicant. And everybody's a first-time applicant.
So, I have a question, does it, uh, I, I think that it, it, it suits the promotion of the arts. I think it's elder core study funding, does it qualify under heads and beds? That's a question that I have in mind, what do you think?
I gave it, um, you know, when I was sort of breaking on tourism, I gave mine, that one, not just a little bit down, but then I thought, if she's having an exhibit here in Dunkinville, um, wherever the venue, and she did say, there are a hundred and fifteen girls, something, in this dance group, this is a project for the hundred and fifteen ballet girls, but anyways, they come from across this, the, um, various cities and so forth, and if they're doing, um, an exhibit, I can see maybe possibly people coming in and seeing that their relative or friend's, um, child in a photo exhibit, and this could, I could see it possibly, um, possibly become a traveling exhibit and from Dunkinville.
Um, is this the one that was, this person is doing to, did my note say this is the annual arts program from October fourth to December?
Yeah.
Because, uh, our policy says it can only ask for one, says applicants may apply for one grant per fiscal year. So, I think it's a two different people, though, I, I might be two different people. Well, isn't it that Brown Girls Do...
Somebody's August first, do March first.
One of them is...
One is the ballet and one is a photo project.
One of them is a photo project, another one is a ballet.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's the same...
Same person.
Uh, the difference is, one is a single grant, the other one is annual.
Right, but it's...
So, what's, what are you saying, what's the rule on that? Because it's one applicant.
I thought it was one applicant for that specific category, like, so...
So, that above all of the categories, before you even get to the categories, the text there is, applicants may only apply for one grant per cycle, per fiscal year.
So, the, the question is, she's, she's applied for two grants, right?
So, the question is, is, we need to look at both of the grants at the same time, and decide if we wanna fund one or the other, because it can only be one or the other.
So, would you like me to skip forward to the other one real quick?
Yes, so I think we skip to the other one.
Can I speak to this one?
Of course you can.
Yeah, I, what this grant isn't for is for a specific exhibit. The grant is to pay the photographer, well, well, the way it's written, it sounds like it's, it's to give her funding so she can photograph these things, but it doesn't say, we're, even though she has some lines here, it, it's not saying, you know, do this photography for an exhibit in July, that's gonna be, you know, and so, I, I can't see funding someone to be about their portfolio or their stock footage portfolio, but I can see if, if there's a specific exhibit involved, that's an event that could bring people into town.
This will be displayed all around the city, that's installation.
Well, it's not that...
It's not that, it's not that, it's not that... She talks about all those things.
Yeah, and it's all in public places and public spaces.
Civic buildings and public events.
I saw that, I just, so, I guess there was, you know, I guess maybe they're all a little vague, but, maybe.
It's a little, listen, this is our first time, this is their first time, and so, I think what's gonna happen after we do this is that we'll be able to say, okay, we need to fix these little lines in place so that they are more thorough next time.
Write it down.
Um, but I think for the most part...
Hey, Alex, so did you go over the, both, did you go over both applications?
No. Not yet.
The second one is to offer a weekly ballet classes for local youth aged four to twelve.
So, they go...
It's an educational kind of grant.
Going to empowerment through ballet, the, uh, application is for an annual arts program grant, which is for nonprofits. Brown Girls Do Ballet is expanding its empowerment through ballet community class program to Dunkinville, Texas to serve at-risk youth ages four to twelve with free ballet training. This initiative uses dance as a tool to foster physical fitness, emotional resilience, and positive mentorship in underserved communities. Through accessible, high-quality instruction and community support, the program helps young participants build confidence, discipline, and a sense of belonging. There is the list, the item, I, the itemized list, total projected budget amount is ten thousand two hundred. And then, the total project budget, two, ten thousand two hundred, and the requested amount is five thousand dollars.
I could not see how this qualifies as, as being eligible at all, but I'm willing to hear, why not? To me, it's a great thing for a nonprofit to be doing. Their organization is professional, I'm particularly into, they've got a good track record, a good targeted group, but it's very limited as far as engagement of anybody else, um, and doesn't really talk about how, I mean, she has something here, but it doesn't talk about tourism at all.
Uh, I would like to just add for consideration, they did submit that they are recognized as a 501(c)(3), they are recognized as a nonprofit, that evidence is here.
And that's why, for that, it's a good grant, yes, but it's a good...
And so, this is something that we're all gonna think about, we can really love a program, we can like, think it's the best thing in the world, but if it's not eligible, it's not eligible. That's not an, that's not an opinion on eligibility or yes, I'm just saying, you love the program, but you're concerned, is it? So, let's look at these two grants, which, which, which of these two do you think is more eligible and more desirable than the other, desirable ball?
Well, can I just talk about the things I like about the, the, both of them? Um, and things that, it's kind of tricky, right? Um, I think that what I did like about one, I did, uh, first of all, they have a huge presence, um, and it's further, of course, than Dunkinville, and so I think that that allows them to bring in more people. It's just like Ron said even earlier with the art installation around town. I think that, you know, if, I know my niece has got a LA picture up and down, Dallas, I'm going, right? Um, so I do think it drives tourism, um, I think far as, um, the youth, once again, I think, I always remember, like, we're supposed to have touch points with young people, right? Um, and I think that's always good, I think that it's also good that we're talking about. Inciting the community to, also for the other one, is to provide some type of programming from a 501(c)(3) that promotes dance, right? Um, and to introduces our young people to dance at an early age, especially those people that are underserved, um, or that may just not have known about, and now there's programming available, so I do like that. I do think that for the programming, the ballet programming for ages four to twelve, I know that, I know dance is expensive, um, so, I think it's a really good initiative. I'm not certain if it fits directly into the guidelines of what we're trying to do, but I do think that, um, a majority of it does. So, we know at this point that we have two different applications, um, one from the company and one from the owner, there's a difference, right? Um, so the question becomes is, is which one do we feel is more, um, parallel to the restrictions and the requirements put forth?
I think that, um, I, I think that the, the one is really, oh, it's a wonderful endeavor, I don't know, but I think it fits within the Arts Commission guidelines, that, um, the one that we're funding the dance, we requested to fund the dance itself, I think it's wonderful. I, I had some concerns, um, about the, the, the photography one, only because I would, I want something more specific, the resulting images will be exhibited in accessible community locations such as libraries, civic buildings, and public events. I would have liked something to say more specifically, we have agreements with these, you know, there's nothing, that's, we, we, we think we're gonna do this, but we don't know that they're gonna get permission to put it in places. I would like something more specific that we, like, we know where the mural is gonna be, we know that. I would like to know that we have an agreement or based on previous experience we've done it in these locations, so that we know that we're funding public art and not, and, and, I mean, but it's gonna end up in a school library that the public can't go to or something, so I, I was hoping for a more specific...
Once again, we don't have any requirements.
Right, no, I know, I'm just saying that, that, you know, that we're looking at that.
I think that we definitely, like, as we're going through this, to take those notes, be able to say, like Ron said, so the next time, you know, I think these are all great things, like, and you're, I would love to know, what are the public spaces, however, we don't know, they haven't already had those relationships with them. Um, I know that if you look on their, um, website as well as their, uh, social media, you'll see that they, uh, they have, they're everywhere. Um, so I think that, once again, we've just gotta remember there hasn't been any requirement that require them to tell us that, so we can't really utilize that in the, in the...
No, but we do have our policy which says it has to come out of tourism, and I don't have, for me personally, that doesn't specifically tell me, but it's one of the tourism, that's just, I mean, that's my interpretation of what they stated. It matches our policy.
Angela, Mac.
Um, actually, there are three grants from these people. Because it's Brown Girls Do Ballet, Empowerment Through Ballet, and the Journey Dance Center, they're all sort of interconnected, if you read them, they're...
Is the, is the journey part of them, or is it something?
No, journey, that's the part of it. They're all sort of interconnected, um, the two owners and things like that, so they asked for three different funding, you know, they don't have to fund the whole year, but, that's just... Um, but they do have a, um, when I looked at it, they do have a, um, a, a, a good impact. What they're trying to do is bring the recital part maybe here to Dunkinville, which I think is great, 'cause I always go to Dallas, and they said they're looking at a location. My concern was, uh, when I looked at it, is, did you, did they consider the school I tour, which is very nice and right down the street, I don't know if they ever did or not, that's a question we can ask. But they've always done the recital, but if they, for what they're doing, ballet is, is one thing, I'd love to see ballet here, it would put, um, people in hotels, and they would come to see recitals and things like that. I know we have gone out of town just to see caramel recitals of, of youth and things that, um, you know, that were, were people that we know, so, and, and stayed at a hotel for that, so, they, they, it does that. My thing is, I sort of was looking at all three of them somewhat together, and then looked at reducing maybe the amount of, just give them a request under one of the grants.
That's interesting, what do y'all think about, I'm sorry, Mac, for, for...
Because they're interrelated or related, uh, of the three, I think this one that's the Journey Dance Center is more in line with the Hot Funs two-step, and a recital of that size and magnitude sounds like it would be a great draw.
If it was here in Dunkinville.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, 'cause it's Dallas Theater Center.
Yeah, because right now, they've been using, they've been doing it for fourteen years, yeah. And I understand because they haven't...
It has to be done here.
Yeah, it has to be done here.
Right, so...
And I think that would be a big draw.
And, and if we, if we make that caveat that it's in Dunkinville...
It has to be.
Then, uh, I wouldn't say fund multiple grants because we're not supposed to, but, uh, of the three, I think this one fits Hot Funs and our, our policy, um, more in line. And so, since it's a beginning, uh...
So, is that gonna happen in Dunkinville?
She says that they were looking for a Dunkinville location.
Yeah, with our location being in Dunkinville, a lot of our students are from Dunkinville.
Because it's only eligible if it's in Dunkinville.
Right, so I think if, when we make a motion, if we wanna do a, a, a caveat saying, uh, we would be willing to...
Think about it, Mac.
It's feeling like it's just gonna be...
Can I, can I, I, I'd like to ask something, just so it's on the record, is if you can go ahead and illustrate the connection between the three.
Okay, if you look at Brown Girls Do Inc., and you go and you look at the, um, primary, listed individual organizations are planning or executing the project, you'll see Wallace McMillan and Metzger and Strong, those are, um, Metzger's Journey Dance Center and Strong, Brown Girls Do, Do Inc. So, you see that in, in that form, and you also see the same applicant's name on the grant, you know, she has a different address for the three thousand one that we were looking at, for the pictures, the photos, and then when you look at her other one under Journey Dance, because the big, sorry, at the end, it, one of the individuals planning on executing the project is Miata Metzger, and she's on, she did the application for Journey Dance, so they're all, all three are interrelated. And so, when I looked at that, my thought was, okay, because we were, had a, 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 a limited amount of funding and so forth, maybe, um, I was gonna recommend, maybe we just give them one, maybe fund one, and maybe not fund the whole thing, um, I would say, I'm just...
The Journey Dance Center, I thought that that was, um, where they...
The Journey Dance Center is doing the recital.
Yes, the recital.
Right, so I'm saying is, is they're the recital.
It's the recital portion, the, um, the, the single project, one for three thousand, one was for the photos, and then the other one, the other grant was for the, the practicing.
That's cool.
If you look at the, on the Brown Girls Do Ballet, on the location, on the second page, it says the Journey Dance Center. So, they...
But doesn't mean they own the same thing.
No, they're all interrelated.
It's just, it's just by partnering with the Journey Dance Center.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it doesn't say that, like, we don't know that Takeo Wallace McMillan, um, owns the Journey Dance Center, that could be just where, like, an example, there's programming at the library. You see them saying this, this is like, so I, I don't wanna assume that just because they're practicing, like, if the, there might be someone who owns the dance, and that's where they happen to be, and they also apply. So, I don't wanna assume, because, um, they're two different names, they're two different addresses, um, so, I didn't think like they were...
They have three different addresses.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but the photographer is the one who's applying for the...
The photographer says she will collaborate with the Journey Dance Center.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that's why it's in her name instead of there.
So, that's what I'm saying, is it's just because they, like, like if I turn, Mac has a business, and I have a business, and you have a business, and I said, oh my God, the Arts Commission has this thing, and we already work together, because I'm the, you know, I'm a dancer, I'm the best dancer in the world, and I'm practicing at this facility, and she's the one selling, um, elote, right, and she has the best elote in the world, right? That, so, what I'm just saying is, 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 just because we're all at that facility does not mean that we have partnership in those businesses. So, I think that we can't assume, I didn't assume that the, I saw the similarities, but I didn't assume that Miata Metzger is the same person that's doing these things, are they?
So, Brown Girls Do Magic, Ballet.
That's next season.
Last night was long. Uh, browngirlsdoballet.com, listed on the team, uh, Takeo Wallace McMillan is the founder and executive director.
Okay.
Uh, Mi, Miata Metzger is not listed on that website, going over to thejourneydancecenter.com, going to the about, the founder and owner is Miata Flanagan, and that is her full name, as per the email comment, uh, that's in her name, and, uh, nobody from, um, Brown Girls Ballet is mentioned on this website, so...
Okay, so, then I was, then I was wrong, so we only have two from the young lady, McMillan and Metzger. She just happens to be utilizing her facility.
That's what it looks like.
Because when I, as I read each one, it seemed like, okay, you've got the photo shoot, you've got the training, and then once we finish the dance training, then we're going to do the recital, that's the way.
It looks like to me that they've all just applied, right? But I do think that Takeo Wallace McMillan and Brown Girls, um, Do Ballet, um, are probably related, because it's Brown Girls Do Ballet project now, I don't know, 'cause Takeo seems like she's the photographer.
She's.
Well, she was also assigned to the other one, um, that Brown, the, the Brown Girls Do Ballet.
Right, so, but when we go over to the Journey Dance, that, the, um, for the recitals, I don't think that they're related. Now, they may practice there, but I don't remember online, when I looked, that they were the same company at all. So I, I don't wanna assume that.
No, I'm not gonna say they're the same company, they're just different companies or different organizations.
Yeah.
They seem like they were related to me. There was a relationship, but that's fine.
Yeah, so the Journey Dance Center, though, that's the actual dance center requesting the grant. So that's not the same thing as the photographer, because we know this is a photographer project, okay? And then we have a ballet project, so these are three different things.
Right.
Right, so they're not the same people. Um, I think that now.
Hold on.
With the Brown, we need to figure out if these two people, if these two applications.
These two are the same.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, because she is listed on somesweetphoto.com.
Yes.
As the owner, and she is also on.
Yes, because I thought she was both, right.
Yeah.
But this one, I didn't feel like this was the same thing. I think this is just the facility, and she probably told her, you need to apply, there's just on this or whatever. But I didn't see it, I don't remember looking at them, those are, I think she just probably.
We'll leave that, we'll leave those journeys.
So Wallace McMillan and Brown Girls Do Ballet are the same ones? And the Journey Dance Center is the facility?
Yes.
Is that what you're going?
Yes.
Really good grants administrators here, all telling. All right, so let's talk about it, do you wanna, what do you wanna do with these?
Well, um, I feel wait to go to the nonprofit. I mean, that's one of the things of trying to develop a cultural center, or cultural district is, you know, to encourage nonprofits. It feels like, um, the photography, um, has, um, feels more like marketing than, uh, a pop-up exhibit or some, some kind of show, per se. It really feels like they're on site, does all this cool stuff, take a lot of photos, and, um, maybe display it, put the photos up. It's, it's not contest, it's just you're displaying, it's marketing, in marketing, you're seeing, very marketing. So it feels a little more geared at, um, if, especially if they're related to the, um, to the nonprofit in that sense, but it's not bad. So, as far as the, um, the recital, I think that if we can guarantee it's Dunkinville, I, I'd go for it. Because that would bring people into Dunkinville, uh, based on what I heard about recital.
Yeah, we put the recital one to the side versus.
Yeah, the classes.
So, which one's the nonprofit?
The five oh one C three is the ballet, um, programming, it's the programming grant. I like that one, like, and let me tell you why. I, I think that there's a couple of things. First of all, is I think it's gonna bring in people from around the best southwest. Because, um, when you look at programming, um, an example, let's say golf. When my sister first started playing golf, there was no golf around here, like, there was no programming, there was no practice, there was no, nothing, right? And so, I think that, um, what happened is, is we had to go to cities nearby, right? And so I think that, um, first of all, we have a five oh one C two category, um, and I think it really adequately, um, it empowers the arts, like, in a different form, and I think it's, the ballet's for anyone, right? Um, so I do agree with him there, that if I had to make a decision as far as installation versus, um, programming, I think the programming could attract people from other cities, um, and it may even be something that people would travel for and be able to spend money in our cities while they're here waiting on their kids during class and stuff like that. Uh, or if there was a recital or something, that would be something they would be able to say, oh, we're gonna spend the night, we're gonna make the day of it, or what have you.
I agree, because I think, like, even other, like, sports, like, people travel all the way to McKinney or to Frisco to go to do soccer things. And that to me is, I mean, from my knowledge, it's pretty unique, especially, you know, Brown Girls Do Ballet, like, it, it, I guess, like, brings out other cultures and other people to be interested. And when you have kids, you have families, when you have families, they wanna do things and they wanna convenience. So if they're already here in Dunkinville, I feel like there's more likely that they'll stay or they'll come around and, and see what we have to offer. The photo thing, I kinda tend to agree with Tim, like, I think it's more of a marketing thing. I think it's so cool, though, because those pictures look amazing. Um, but I just think it needs to be reworked on how it could bring tourism. Maybe if it was a game, like, people had to come do some sort of scavenger hunt or something, or I don't know. Like, um, maybe there's a QR code with it, or it was representing what that facility was and everything that they have to do there, and why you should come and stay. I don't know, but I think that needs to be a little reworked, but the, the, if I had to vote, I'll vote for the Brown Girls Do Ballet as well.
And I think what we ask, uh, the tendency would be, is that we are, um, provided as a part of that marketing. Um, I think DAC should be a partner, I presume that's a partner. And that makes it a good that we're providing ballet for the youth. That would be one of my. Fred, would you call it? Friendly note?
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't.
No, the friendly note. Friendly amendment.
Sorry, Mac, you have your.
Um, the, the, the thing that I keep in my head against is the, the hotel thing. And the, while the photographs are good, uh, if there was an event where there was a, uh, you know, like, Esels up for a couple of days, or something where it's an event, I could see that. Uh, but also, the ballet, while it fits our, you know, our annual arts program grant, it doesn't fit, uh, because, um, the hot thing here, it says, uh, educational class or similar type event, not likely to attract tourists and hotel guests. It's that hotel guest, uh, you're, it, yes, you might have, you know, weekly soccer games, but you're not gonna stay the night at the soccer practice or the soccer game necessarily. So, uh, I think that might be harder, maybe I'm just stuck in my head because somebody else is gonna decide if it's heads and beds.
Well, and so it's worth mentioning that there have been discussions at city, at city council and city council briefings in this about how much weight is put into the heads and beds part. But we don't have a policy on, we have a policy on, on this, but we don't have a, right, I'm just.
Yeah, and I agree with Mac to an extent, but I also think that, I think we don't ever bring anything diverse to the community to say, hey, listen, guess what, they have ballet or whatever, and I think, like, we want things that are gonna attract people to come to our city, even if it's for a state occasion. Even if we, you know, we, we recommend, hey, with this programming and this, you know, that you're doing, is when you're doing your final project, when you're doing, or what do they call it, Amy? Showtime, you know, whatever, you know, whatever they're doing on that final, you know, once the ballet class is over and you have.
The private rehearsal.
Yeah, we would turn around and tell, you know, so you can suggest them, hey, you know, you should provide, get with the hotels and like, provide a, a stay, overnight stay package, you know what I mean? So, like, just even with some events and stuff, we do a lot of them, they might be only one day events, but they're two day because they're not gonna be reading on that Friday night or what have you. So I kinda think that, um, it definitely can attract tourists because you have kids. People can come to see their babies and they.
And if you look at her budget, she does have a showcase, she had put it in her budget to have a showcase.
So I think that maybe what they do is.
Culminates at the end.
Yeah.
Well, that's probably this, uh, Journey Dance Center.
Maybe, this ends in December, so maybe not, it might be a Christmas.
No, this is a recital.
Yeah, the recital's not till May. This, this particular one ends in December twenty.
And this is four to twelve, that's two to eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah, so this one ends in December, so she may, maybe have a Christmas recital, we don't know, but she is not.
But I do think that they should.
That would be. So I don't have to make a motion.
But each can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Tim, just sorry.
So the, you know, when I saw the budget, I think for the recital, I think that, um, what kinda stepped it out is like.
We're not on the recital.
Okay. I don't know.
We're not on the recital. We moved it.
I don't know why this is so confusing.
Sorry, Tim, but when we get to the recital, we're gonna let you cook. When we get to the recital, we're gonna let you talk.
I, well, I, I do have a showcase, um, but my concern is, well, there's no significant tourists, I mean, and what it out would attract. For instance, culminating showcase in parentheses, low cost in studio event. So I'm not sure that that makes it such a broad thing that would be heads and beds, or, and I wanted to.
Expand on that for me, what does that mean?
Back here on the last page.
It's on the, on her.
Low cost in studio event, isn't it?
Budget. What do you mean?
The next to the last line on the budget, it says culminating showcase, we're starting at the showcase event.
It's a low cost in studio event, huh?
Well, it's an in-studio event, it's just not gonna be, it's not necessarily gonna, uh, attract much tourists or something.
Why would you think that?
Well, the, the studio's not big enough for them to have a recital.
How big is the studio? Do you have those details?
We don't know.
Do you have those details?
No, I don't have those details.
No, the, the.
No, I'm, I'm just asking. Have you saw the studio?
The way that she.
The studio is gonna be at the Journey Dance Center.
Okay, so, I think that, once again, we don't have requirements, so I don't feel like we should be utilizing that for.
And things may change by the time.
Right, she, I mean, like, yeah.
And they have other locations that she.
They have a location, she made it real big, but I think the main thing is, is, does, is that one of our requirements, right now, for our arts program application? It's not, so I don't think we should utilize that information.
Well, I haven't seen anything in here that tells me it's gonna put heads in beds, I guess that's my concern, if I was looking for that.
Yeah.
And that's just my interpretation of it, so.
She says in the past, our shows have been held at the Dallas Children's Theater.
Are you looking, are you?
I'm looking at the, sorry, the Journey Dance Center.
Are you at the recital? You and Tim wanna be at the recital so bad. We gonna get that right next.
Okay, um, okay, so I'm gonna do, I'll do two, one, two ways, okay, I'll do the first one. Um, if we look at the one that's, um, the individual artist that we started off with, Takiya Wallace McMillan, the photography one? That's what I'm looking at, okay? So, I'd like to make a motion, uh, recommending that we do not, to the city council, that we do not.
It's a positive. So if you can make a motion in a positive, then we have to vote for it or we don't.
Okay. Okay, so.
Because of the fact you could download it.
Okay, so, make a motion that we fund the.
Do we have to make a motion on every single application?
I, I, I would really like it if you would do it, I would really like it if you do it, because this is gonna go before council and I'd like it to have to.
So you want us to make a recommendation to fund and then we vote it down?
We're, we.
So like last.
We don't wanna fund this one.
Like last night, if you are all, I, I am trying not to taint the, the vote, so, if you are all in a, well, no. It doesn't even matter if you're all, if you make the motion in the positive, each person can vote yes and, and affirmative of that, making that motion go for it, or no, against that motion. So it, it, that puts it in a place where it's the majority, so if you do the, the, the motions in the same way.
Someone to help, instead of help bolster that, is la- at last night's city council, council member Mac Burnett said, we always make motions in a positive.
Okay.
When the group brought their firm.
Okay, I make a motion recommending that the city council fund the Brown Girls Do Ballet photo project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Any questions on that, sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
All those against.
All opposed? I was being subject. You know, it would, if, it would, oh, this, nevermind, it's gonna be a policy thing, everyone. It's gonna go in my notes for next time.
Almost there.
Eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion recommending that the city council fund Brown Girls Do Inc., Brown Girls Do Ballet project in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So a second on the motion?
A second on the motion.
It's why it's seconded, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Okay.
It's still the nonprofit, which is the ballet. Is asking for money so that they can rent the space, the Journey Dance Center, to do their classes. And they can hire, or they can pay someone to coordinate. And they can also pay instructors for all of that. And they're asking for part of the ten thousand.
Okay.
For eligible uses for a nonprofit, you can use it for operations, production, artists' fees, and any other stuff that you can follow.
Okay. Amy? Any other questions on this, there is a motion and a second? Um, all in favor of the motion?
Oops, hold on, hold on, this is.
I want everyone to be mindful at seven thirty, so we can get out there right now.
No one said morning from nine forty.
Oh, I should've known.
Okay.
All those opposed?
For the record, you just spell your name.
Michael Jackson.
P E R. All right, let's move on, are you good, are you ready, Alex?
You voted in favor? Okay, thank you.
Journey Dance Center? Yeah, it's Journey Dance Center.
Is there, is there a motion for Journey Dance Center?
Y'all wanna do a recital or not?
They can talk about the recital.
You're bouncing all over the place, I put these in order, I'm sorry, just.
Hold on to your order.
So next one's a Rotary?
It's a Rotary. Rotary, yeah.
Okay, uh, the next one, yes, is, disheveled me. Uh, the next one is Dunkinville Pause and Paint. It is submitted as an annual arts program grant, which has a funding limit up to twenty thousand dollars. Eligibility requires a five oh one C three nonprofit arts organization. Uh, the project summary, a dog-friendly outdoor art party featuring pet-themed activities, local artists, food vendors, and fundraiser stations at Rotary Park, kicking off a new dog park and annual after that. The total project budget is ten thousand dollars, the requested amount is ten thousand dollars.
Alex, would you read the part of the policy about the annual? Because, refresh my thinking, because I think of that as an art series, like what you might have at the theater or symphony.
Um, one, annual arts program grants, purpose to support nonprofit organizations presenting a full season of arts programming. Eligibility, five oh one C three nonprofit arts organizations, funding limit up to twenty thousand dollars. Eligible uses, operations, production, artists' fees, rental, venue rental, requirement must occur in Dunkinville and serve a public purpose. Acknowledgement, city and or commission logo must appear in all marketing.
So as I hear that, an annual series is not an annual event. So a series would be something like the theater does.
Right, it says a season of events here.
Plus, they, this is the one that does not have a budget, does it? I could not find a specific.
Is this about the arts or is this about the dog park?
I think it's about the, I think, well.
They're promoting the dog park, that it's some big dog park.
We're utilizing an arts promotion, arts as a way to promote.
To market it.
Yes, and I think that it's a, a family, a family affair, right? People's pets are part of their family, and I think that it also, um, I don't know, I really like this one, um. I think that community engagement is important, it's one of our, um, once again, I'm gonna go refer back to our comprehensive plan, um, and community engagement, we're supposed to be, um, pillars of, you know, we're up here basically providing community engagement opportunities. And that's open to everybody, and so I think that this is a great, um, it's a great way for you, for you to be able to get out and say, hey, come down here and, you know, do some art with us, you know, Paul's impressed, I think that's cute, I, I, I do. So, with family as far as. So, with family as far as, is a nice little thing to do, or.
I love it, and I love Rotary, um, but my question was, would you read, because I want us to talk about that line in the policy, because the policy reads to me that it has to be an annual series. That's how I read it, Alex, can you read it here for the record?
A full season.
A full season, so a season, this is a, this is an annual event, a season would be like, the symphony has a season, the theater has a season.
I think it qualifies as a single project, which, first time's three thousand, and after that we can do ten thousand, but I, I think it falls under the single project, even though it's an annual event, it's, it's a single annual event, not a seasonal event, you know?
We don't have a budget, so we don't know what they're gonna do with the ten thousand, per se, is there a budget somewhere that?
Yeah, what you get, what you saw is what you got.
Yeah, they just, to me, I, I looked at it, it was ten thousand, they just want ten thousand, that was it, but, um, I like the whole, I like the event, I just wasn't, um, game on giving them due, but entire ten thousand.
Well, so that.
Because Rotary has money, Tri-City has money, they, everybody likes a little pop, pop event, and, and, I mean, we go in our pockets all the time for them.
Well, I'm even wondering if it's identified correctly, because if it, because if it's once a year, that's an event, if they were gonna do this, like a season, like you would have the symphony, then I think it would apply to that, I'm not sure it applies for the way that Alex just read in the, in the policy, that's, that's, that's my red flag. A s- a, a series, a season, is, you're gonna go, and you're gonna see, if you're gonna go to opera, there's gonna be five operas in a season.
But the, the question is, is the season defined as that, as a requirement, like, it's, because, is it a season, or because you can have one thing a season, and that's your, your annual, is a season event, so, I, I don't know, what do y'all think?
Just presenting a full season of arts programming, so, um, it just seems, I mean, to me, that definition would be, like, an opera season, or something like that, I don't know, I think, I think it's a cool project, but I think it qualifies as a single project. Um, and, and, and in that, I know from my personal experience in applying for money, um, it's up to the, what, the, the entity, um, to say how much, you, you can, you can ask for ten thousand, but we get three. So, I mean, I think it qualifies under that single project, and I think it's a cool event that could grow and do some great things for the city, I don't think it's an act, I don't think it qualifies as the, the, the annual season, but I think it qualifies as a, as a, as an individual event, and I think the Rotary would probably be grateful for whatever they got.
You know, when I, I spoke at the Rotary recently, and they were warm, and they were welcoming, and I had the members come up, and they say, how can we help, uh, the, the Arts Commission, the Kennedys offered to donate to the arts fund, um, uh, my only hangup is, I don't think it.
Have we defined season, what a season means?
Well, a series is a season, I mean, that's.
No, does it, have we defined it, do we have a definition?
I would call that an industry, no, so I look at it as an industry, as an industry, uh, definition.
Well, maybe this is the.
Yeah, I think it's.
He's trying to get your attention for a few.
I'm, I think, well, just let me finish my statement, I think this is a thing, is, is, now, this is my personal opinion, don't hold it against me, but I.
I'm holding it against you right now.
Thank you, um, no, but I think that, and I don't, I, I just feel like it's, there's not a define, like, we can define in our mind what we're used to, but once again, even like Amy, Amy's so well versed in applying for grants and stuff like that, but once again, this is the first time we've done this, and I think that some of these things, we don't have a definition of what a season is, every, you know, specifically, we didn't provide them, this is the definition of season, so, I think that they're, we're a little shaky on it, they're gonna be a little shaky with.
Read the, read the definite, read that part, then, and I'll, uh, to you, Alex, one more time, read what's in the policy about.
Thank you, Alex.
Well, there's another part that you may wanna catch in this, okay, annual arts program grants, purpose, to support nonprofit organizations presenting a full season of arts programming. Eligibility, five oh one C three nonprofit arts organizations, funding limit, twen- up to twenty thousand dollars, eligible uses, operations, production, artist fees, venue rental, requirement must occur in Duncanville and serve a public purpose, acknowledgement, city and arts commission.
I think it qualifies for a single.
Oh, did you want me to read single?
Yes.
Um, to support a single, public facing arts project or event, eligibility, individuals, nonprofits, businesses, city departments, and the Duncanville Arts Commission, funding limit, uh, first time applicants up to three, first time applicants that are not city, up to, uh, up to three thousand dollars, non reimbursable, requirement must occur in Duncanville and serve a public purpose, and then acknowledgement for the Arts Commission of the City.
So are we thinking it would be more that, than with the way they classified it in the application they turned in?
That's what I.
Because it's a non-prof, it's not a nonprofit.
I'm gonna go Mac, then I'm gonna go Tim.
And then me.
And then you, Mac, Tim.
So can we, even though they applied for an annual arts program, maybe they just clicked the wrong button, can we change it to a single project or support grant, because that seems to me a better fit, and, uh, just because they asked for the max, doesn't mean we even have to give them three thousand, we could give them one thousand, because we have no budget, we don't know what they wanna spend it for, on, necessarily. And so, uh, I, my question was, can we switch it, even though, do the other type of grant?
Couldn't we do that?
I, I think you would do it the same way.
Because they're not gonna do that because they're five oh one C three, that's what I think, they're probably, oh, we're five oh C three, that's the one we apply to, but.
Tim, Marion.
Well, yeah, I think it's, I think, first of all, we're the arts commission, I don't think this is an artistic event, I think it says paint, you're gonna stick your dogs in the thing, and it puts the paint, but you know, and then you're gonna do all this other stuff that you need money for, but, that's not, that's not art commission, to my mind, if we're gonna take money for that dog event, away from a real arts thing, then I'm not in favor of doing that. Secondly, it says five oh one C three arts, um, program, it says, uh, nonprofit arts organization, Rotary's not an arts organization per se, it's a different kind of organization, it's a different kind of organization, given those two points, I don't think.
There you go.
That's exactly what I was gonna buy, exactly, plus, without seeing what they were even thinking of for the ten thousand, I thought that was, uh, a requirement, we have to see what their detailed budget is, and we don't, and so I think, I don't think we can reduce it without seeing what they were asking for in the first place.
Here's a, would you read that in the policy where it talks about, uh, promotion of the arts, and then we can have a conversation to Tim's point, is this promoting arts, or?
Well, we were painting rocks a couple months ago, so I mean.
But we were, that's it, we were dogs.
Right, but I think the thing about it is, well, I also think the thing about it is, though, is, is even though we can say, well, it's not an art thing, it is an art thing, because, I mean, it's a family engagement thing for the community, and it's still art.
And I, I've been to one where they had animals painting, you know, people brought their animals and the dogs and, and doing pop artists and stuff.
Was it pets or art?
It was, they brought their pets.
Yeah, no, it wasn't pets.
And they were doing art.
Or was it a day of art? That's my question.
Isn't that a day of art or pet stuff, because if we can do a day of art or rock?
So I, so here's another way, so here's another way to look at it, is, so, so we have a lot of questions on the eligibility, Rotary may choose for us not to make a decision on this, and they may wanna choose to reapply, and, and so if, if, it, it may be better, it may be more advantageous, because, because it looks like, I don't remember when the date was, it could be more advantageous for them, if we choose not to fund it, and they can reapply, and hit some of these things and get the full amount.
Yeah, their date is November first.
So they can apply again in September if they want.
Well, but it says applicants may only apply for one grant per fiscal year.
Well, that, well, that'd be next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So this is this fiscal year, that will, so September will be the.
They would not meet it, they would not make it in time.
Oh, they wouldn't?
The, 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 the awards would not go out of time.
I don't remember.
I don't know, we were painting rocks, so I don't, I don't see how this isn't an art project, and it's bringing families out, and it's engaging them, and, I mean, I know that they may not have put the application in the, into the correct segment, and we may not have to give them ten thousand dollars, and we may not even have to give them three thousand dollars, but I think that it's a different way to engage families with artistic abilities, I think it's a great way, um, to also engage, you know, we did a, uh, sensory area at our last event, and it was huge, and I think that, um, pets, uh, and people bringing out their pets and stuff, um, especially those pets that are, um, are, paying, what do they call?
Services.
Service dogs and stuff like that, like, I don't know, we've worked with a lot of veteran programs and stuff, and I, I just, I really like this program, and I think it's really something fun, I think it's different, um, and I think there's no better time, um, you have than with kids and pets, I think, they're funny.
I see, and then that.
Well, I was gonna make a ro- a motion recommending that we, uh, uh, we fund the Duncanville Paws and Paint for three thousand dollars.
I second that motion, hold on.
I, I've got an idea that you may wanna consider, so that it's consistent, making a motion recommending that the city council, because you're making a recommendation to city council, that they fund the Paws and Paint, um, amending that it be moved to a single project, as you were mentioning, and then the amount, and.
Can we address the, is the, Mac, uh, Mac, ask your question.
Uh, well, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to one thousand instead of three thousand.
So, there is, was, there was, so there was no budget attached, does it matter?
They just said ten thousand.
They don't have any details at all.
No detail.
What do y'all think about not having the budget attached?
I don't know, like, because it's a lot of, and we're talking, I know it's a lot more than two thousand dollars to do that one day, just from my experience of doing events, I know they're expensive, you're dealing with dogs, you're dealing with paint, you're dealing with families, you're talking about all the different things they wanna have there, vendors, food, fundraising stations, pet themed activities, local artists, they're bringing out local artists, they have to pay for those, so I, I just feel like, is the ask, it may seem big, but events are, we know they're expensive, um, and I think that, um, the Rotary, um, supports the community, and we support the community, and I think that anywhere where we can partner, to make sure that we, yeah, that we do a good job in, in, in bringing some cohesion.
But let's talk, I wanna, I wanna talk on Tim's, because this goes back to policy, because the, the hot policy, I believe it's hot, has to be promotion of the arts, and Tim just brought up, is this, are we promoting the arts, are we promoting the, the park, are we promoting the dogs, and can we talk about that, because that's a, because that's a hot law.
What about this local artist, that's not supporting the arts?
That, that was a, that was a question, so like, because Tim.
Of course, they talked about local art, local art.
Adult friendly outdoor art party, first of all, it's an art party, um, and it has pet themed activities, it's providing local, bringing out local artists, the food vendors, I don't know about that being a part of it, but, um, fundraising stations, but I think that, um, I also think it's a new park, and I think that if we can be a part of that, that looks good for us, because another thing that you gotta remember is, is that we require you to, um, put our, market us in these things.
I like the, I like that, too, uh, so, you know, my.
And, and, and I just wanna remind us that when Parks and Rec came to talk to us about the dog park, we even said to him that, don't forget to include us, the arts, that there needs to be art in the park.
So here, so, I mean, I, I see everybody's, my only concern in this, is I do think that they, when they first applied, they, they applied to the law one, so if we're talking about an arts based event, I think, because, so look, the, the folk, the, the state of Texas knows that people get, can get kinda hinky with hot money, and so they have an antenna on hot, are they, are they trying to, you know, kinda fix it, or are they really being creative about it? So, if, if, if the Arts Commission says, yeah, this is hot compliant, city council can decide whether it is or not, it's just a recommendation.
Yeah.
But there's a, yes, Anne.
There may be a place for a mural in the dog park of dogs.
I, I do like the, I do like the idea that we're, we're supporting a new.
I think it's new, and I think anything that we can be involved in, and look like we're helping to present or get out there, I mean, it, I think, we, and that's just my personal opinion, but I always think that anytime we get a chance to market ourselves, like, we, just the fact that we're associated with that, that's good press for us, we're trying to create a cultural district, like, that's, to me, is, is, this is our community working for us.
And people are very, I mean, a lot of you have cats and dogs, people are very sensitive to their animals, and like I said, I've been to one where they had paw art, they were taking their little paws, putting them in.
This is the world.
So what about this, so, so let's, let, let me ask, let me ask you this.
They, it keeps saying.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, so what I wanna know is, because, because, because we love, we love Rotary, we love the project, but I need, and I wanna hear on the record, why is it hot compliant? Why is it hot? Mac?
One spin on that is the Rotary is an international club, and they, if, you know, if you have pets and they're doing, they might invite people from other clubs, and so I could see how it could be, uh, tourists.
Okay, so it's an international club?
It's bringing in local artists. Hello?
I just wanted, so I just wanted on the record that we're having that conversation, because we have a commissioner who is concerned that it's maybe not an arts project, and maybe it's not hot.
And perhaps, maybe, maybe one of the vendors has.
So there's another, there's not a detailed budget?
It says, I mean, that's a document checklist, a detailed project budget list is a, is an required document, and we don't have that, um, I'm, I think it's a great project, and I'm, I even see the outside of it, and I'm all about the pets, and I see the international, but I, we've asked for a budget for everyone, and the fact that they didn't include one, now, we can still make the motion with caveat, we recommended to city council upon, if we do the other caveats, upon a receipt of a detailed budget or something like that, how money will be spent, but we don't have anything, the others had given us that budget, they're gonna send us so much on artist fees, there's so much on grandma or whatever, but we don't have, it's a, that detailed budget, and that was a, 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 it says required documents, and that's one of them, so.
But I think also, they did ask for a budget, ten thousand dollars, it didn't give an itemized list, no, but I mean, when, um, the Blue Fest came in, they didn't, they just asked us for some money and didn't give us, no, like, didn't give us no budget, and everybody was ready to fund it the first day, so I feel like we, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, they did give us a budget, did they give us an itemized list, it didn't say to give us an itemized list.
So I'll go back to the, you know, the devil's in the tail, but it says detailed project budget, not just a, a budgeted amount.
But it also lets us know the party featuring, the, the activities, local artists, food, good fundraising stations, so I think, is there details, there are, did they list them under the budget, not necessarily, but it did not ask for itemized list, and ask for a budget.
So Alex, when you, I'm sorry, Tiffany, Alex, when you were going over reviewing the applications and, and people, they were incomplete, did you see that as incomplete?
And we were asking for a budget, did we also, um, provide them an example of what we wanted?
No, I didn't provide anybody with a sample of what was wanted, as far as a budget, because you guys never determined what it was, that was never discussed as, this is the format we want for a budget.
Because under section six, it just wants a budget, and they completed it.
Yeah.
It's a detail, it's a separate thing.
It really ends up me, like, I, I don't know. Right, Alex, we're not giving them ten thousand dollars.
We're looking at the three.
We're looking at them thirty percent.
Or a thousand, I guess that's free.
But they give it for a thousand dollars, it's gonna cost more than that for the rest.
You, you, I, I believe you have a motion.
We do.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
No motion.
Yeah, she seconded it.
Yeah.
Well, wait, then she was gonna re, you were gonna reword it, though.
I was gonna read it again, well, I make a motion recommending the city council fund the Duncanville Paws and Paint project in the amount of, in the amended amount, three thousand dollars.
One thousand two, I mean, no, he won it.
I'm gonna second it for three thousand dollars.
And she seconded it for three thousand.
That's only thirty percent of what they asked.
But if he wanted a friendly amendment, if she agrees to it, no, or he can make a motion to amend that out, and he vote on his motion first, and if the passer fails, and then he could go back to.
Do you guys understand that? So you, you have to ask her, and then if she agrees, you know, for a friendly amendment.
Hot spot, you're on a hot spot.
It's okay.
Let's, I'd like to keep my motion at three thousand dollars.
So now, do you wanna make a motion?
No.
So there's a motion, there's a second, any more discussion? I. Mike, Mike, this is one of those things where we say, do we love the project, do we love the organization, but is it compliant? I have questions on whether it's compliant with hot.
I think it's fair, though, but I think we're gonna have, the first time we're gonna have questions about everything, because we're just trying to do it right, and I think that, um, these applicants are trying to, um, do something positive in the community that is arts focused, and everybody has a different realm on what art is, and so I think it's, um, we have to give them a little grace, just like we deserve a little grace, as we're doing this, to make sure we're making the best decisions for the commission.
Any more discussion on this item, right, Tim?
If we're not funding them, do we think that they will still put on an event like this?
I suspect they would, but that's, I, I can't say that, I have no idea.
I don't know, but, I mean, it's.
I think it's something that they've already planned. I think it's something that they've already planned. Cause they're trying to move forward on that dog park. And so they're trying, and they wanna introduce that area.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily the question. I think the question is, if the state comes back to the city and says, I'm sorry, you use the, you use that money inappropriately. I think that's the question I'm asking. I love the Rotary, I love the.
Well, I think the Duncanville Paws and Paint, though, to me is, is that brings in tourism, of people to bring their pets in town. I think it's an event that people would come, whether it's crossing in from the Soto or Grand Prairie, or whatever it may be. I think that it's promoting local artists. I think that those are the two things that I'm most, um, I, that, I think that qualifies for hot funds.
Do you think, and I'm asking this just so it's, we're having this conversation, they're, they're, maybe we're spending too much time for three thousand dollars. Any more discussion on this?
Well, if, for the amendment, if it's only three thousand, I still think we need a detailed budget of what that's for.
Ask for a friendly amendment.
You're suggesting two thousand, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I said, if we're going to say three thousand, we still need a detailed budget of what even that's for.
Oh, okay.
Is that an okay?
Does it need to be in the motion?
No.
You have to accept her friendly amendment.
Yeah. She says yeah.
Okay, can you repeat the motion?
I make a motion recommending the city council fund Duncanville Paws and Paint project in the amount of three thousand dollars, and supply us with a detailed budget for the event.
Is that okay?
Yeah. See, if you say, if you say.
Well, should it be, that's what you want it, that's what you want it?
Or should it be if they supply us?
Well.
If we don't have a chance to do that.
But, so here's the thing, is the application incomplete, because you just changed the motion to include a detailed budget. So your suggestion is the application's incomplete.
Isn't that what we did, the first, the friendly amendment?
I said it first. Okay, I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my.
Thank you, because it's such a small amount. Let's go with the original motion.
So let, let's finish this and take a, take a five-minute break, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so would you repeat the motion?
All right. I make a motion recommending the city council fund Duncanville Paws and Paint project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Uh, was there a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, hold on.
I feel like Anne. Y'all. I'm conflicted. Okay, they got the cats, are you ready?
That's different.
No, I, no.
That's different.
You remember when the cats come out here?
Okay, got that.
All opposed?
Will the city council know the vote?
Yes, I will.
Tim, do you see me?
It's just like, they'll wanna know, was this a unanimous decision, or was it, uh, you know, it's a mixed feeling?
Let's take a five, can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Calling.
This is eight oh two.
It's already eight o'clock, y'all. We got.
Twelve, Arts Commission's back in session. Let's go ahead and continue. Um, Mr. Handy, go for it.
Uh, Dance Recital is the event title. Single project support grant is the category. Each year, our studio has an annual recital. All of our dancers, our ages two years of to eighteen years old, perform dances on a stage they have been learning in our program. Uh, we teach ballet, tap, hip-hop, lyrical, and African dance schemes. The total project budget is twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. The requested amount is ten thousand.
Discussions?
Well, we already decided it has to be in Duncanville. And I think if it's going to be in Duncanville, they have to readjust it, but, because if this is for Dallas Theater Center, which sounds like a popular, I, we need to ask for a, what did I say, Dallas Children's Theater. Yeah, then, uh, they need to.
So, so I kinda read that, and they said in the past, it's about in the Dallas.
Yeah, but I think it's gonna be at the Theater Center.
But these figures are not Duncanville figures, my assumption. I mean, what venue in, uh?
Is that, weren't they gonna have it at the Cedar Ridge?
I think they're gonna have it at the Dance Center.
Yes, and I don't see how that can be accurate.
Maybe the.
Tim? So let me just tell us that they do this, you know, at Lady Humphreys, or the Theater Center, and, um.
Uh, the way that I read that, they said in the past, it's at the Children's Theater, Dallas, but they're gonna be doing it at the Studio Cedar Ridge this time. That's how I read it.
I think they were estimating five hundred, it's gonna have to be someplace in the teens, five hundred. If the, on the, it says revenue ticket sales estimated five hundred tickets.
Yeah, that's where they're getting.
That's where we're getting that number, and I.
Well, it says concession sales, so I'm assuming they may be having it renting someplace here. Cause everyone knows these, the projects and things have to be in Duncanville.
Yeah, it has to be the field house or something.
So, yeah, I, I'm thinking the fact that they said concession sales, I'm thinking of maybe a, maybe the field house.
Mac?
Is the high school auditorium used for things like that?
You know what, you know what, maybe at a school facility, that's right. That's, that would be.
But that'd be the only one.
Yeah, maybe they've ever done it at a school, yeah. We don't know that, though.
So one of the things I know that Alex is doing when he was taking these applications, is he was, he was calling up to make sure, if they said it's gonna be somewhere, he would check to make sure it's.
Only if it was city facilities.
Only if it's in Duncanville.
Cause those I could verify easily.
I would say that they requested a single project support grant, which, and then they've asked for ten thousand, but by our guidelines, the first time it's gonna break out for that, but if you're.
Is there a motion? Mac?
I would like to make a motion recommending to the city council to fund the Journey Dance Center Dance Recital for the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a, there's a motion and a second discussion? No discussion?
Would this, that it be in Duncanville?
Oh, yeah, with the caveat that it be in.
Do you wanna?
Yes, so, here we go again. I'm recommending to the city council fund the, the Journey Dance Dance Recital for the amount of three thousand dollars, uh, with caveat that it be in, or located in Duncanville.
Second.
No, a motion and a second and discussion? No discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Look at that.
Anybody opposed?
Uh, next?
Next.
It says Ron Thompson.
Do you have to refuse or something?
No, I'll vote no.
Only if it comes with one.
Kay, Ella Fair submitted as a single project support grant. Ella Fair's a two-day community arts event launched in twenty twenty-four by Duncanville residents Gail Slager and Sue Clark to support the newly formed Duncanville Arts Commission through public awareness and grassroots fundraising. Organized in just four weeks, the inaugural event drew approximately two hundred attendees and artists from across the region, raised four hundred dollars for the Duncanville Arts Fund, and received local media coverage. Laying the foundation for an expanded twenty twenty-five event focused on visibility, revenue, and long-term opportunity for the city's creative community. The total project budget is sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Requested amount is four thousand, nine hundred and fifty, though as I understand, as of this hour, this afternoon, that requested amount may have changed.
So I can't talk about this. Uh, because the Arts Commission, this is the art, what the Arts Commission did last time. This would be money that would not be in external distribution, it would stay within the Arts Commission. And this is to, I can't pitch. So yes, so the, the amount requested has been amended to three thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Wasn't that the max anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
So why wasn't originally asked for forty-nine fifty?
I can't tell you, no.
Um.
Technically, this is an internal event. It's the same thing as you are basically asking yourselves to fund an event that you are a part of.
So here's one of those, so.
It, it sort of falls under the supplementary, uh, it's, uh, it sort of falls under the call for artists where you are, because it's one of you pitching it to yourselves.
Who's piece of that?
It's sort of a fire event, like, like, not a lot different than even the, the G and G, the Hispanic heritage, or the mixers. It's something that we would actually really be doing ourselves.
Because it's a fundraiser for the Arts Commission.
Yeah, so it's not really.
Where's the budget? Everybody have a budget problem, just think, where's the budget?
A budget was submitted.
Where's that?
And I'm the, and I'm the lead on it.
Where's the budget, though? It's not here.
Here's a question. Did they rent the senior citizens, and how much is that for such a rental?
Okay, so Alex, guys, I need your help with the language. So because we agreed that we would not allow applicants to come in and present, technically, this is an Arts Commission project like it was last year. So I can't present. I'm the lead on it.
But last year, it wasn't.
It wasn't Arts Commission thing.
It was.
We supported it.
It was, we supported it.
Afterwards, yeah, we found out.
We found out. We, she did all that stuff last.
Y'all, I need, so I need help, y'all, I can't.
Okay, so let me ask you these questions. This is the thing about it, this, right? So last year, um, uh, Gail, um, excuse me. Let me, let me get it together. Ms. Slager and Ms. Clark came in, and they told us about the event after it happened. We did not support it. It was not an Arts Commission event. It was something that they did for the Arts Commission, but that was not something that we came up with, and we said, yeah, go for it. This was something that they came and told us about the success after it happened. Would that be correct or not correct?
No, we worked very hard, uh, that day especially. We took easels over there. Um, many people, including Ron, helped them set up. We carried things, we supported it, it, we didn't.
Was this something that we talked to, it was on the agenda? Was this ever on the agenda and discussed in many of our meetings?
No, she came in, like you said, and spoke to us. They did it, and they were doing it on our behalf, to raise money for us.
They, they raised four hundred dollars.
Yes.
So they raised four hundred dollars, and now they want fi- five thousand dollars, and the total projected budget is sixteen thousand dollars. But we don't have one piece of paper that says what this funding is for?
So Alex hasn't attached the budget.
Okay.
There's actually a very proposed budget in there, and it's been amended to three thousand.
And so the, but the most that, for a single project is three thousand dollars.
Correct.
Right? And so therefore is, is, they only raised four hundred dollars last year.
I can't speak.
I didn't, I'm just saying, is, we gotta look at, there was only four hundred dollars raised last year.
Alex, were you able to?
I, I have to go and plug in, and that will cause some time. Um, but I can read out the budget.
Sure.
Uh, four thousand dollars for artists and speakers support. One thousand, eight hundred and fifty for event production.
Can you read the, so there's some amended language in there. Not amended language, there's a language attached to the budget where it outlines the, 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 the project in full scope. Where it talks about the roundtable and the mentorships.
Down here.
So it says that the newly formed Duncanville Arts Commission, it's, it's to support us, do public awareness and grassroots fundraising, to do what?
So.
If you can give me roughly ten minutes, I will go print.
I did say, can we move this down and work on, there are.
Yeah, can we get, can we get me glass?
Do you? Can we do last?
Okay.
Well, we can't, cause he just left.
Okay, in the meantime.
Well, I understand that it's like, I, I, it's not something we, we started, thought we supported it, and it was nice of them to raise money for us, that they did every year. And, uh, last year, we helped them with that. It's really not a.
They were staying up seeing.
It's really not a Arts Commission-sponsored event necessarily.
I see it as a win-win. It displays art, it's not even some other, it is an arts event in that it brings in all sorts of works of art. And the public is invited to view it and to see it. If they make any money, the Arts Commission is the beneficiary of that. But that's a secondary thing. It truly is, does showcase art, um, and I think that's important. And it, it really showcases that, that high caliber of art, and, and it's cool.
Angela, back.
I agree. I mean, I know it's an art, but my concern, or my question is, the sixteen, six fifty budget, is that sixteen, six fifty coming out of the Arts Commission?
No.
They're only asking for three thousand, that's been amended to three.
Only three thousand. So even though we're sort of part of that event, the sixteen, six fifty, we're not worried about that.
Not anymore than we're worried about the dance, the Journey Dance Center, saying it was twenty thousand, seven thirty-five, and we're only giving them three thousand dollars. They're, they said their whole project was gonna cost.
Yeah, but we're saying that this is a part of the Duncanville Arts.
Yeah, but because.
That's the difference on Duncanville. It says Duncanville Arts Commission.
Right, I know, I know that. I'm just, I'm just saying sixteen.
They're basically saying, we, we wanna present this. Isn't that what they're saying? Is that what's being said? That we're presenting this as a Duncanville Arts Commission?
So, so.
No, but I'm saying it says to support the newly formed.
So I would ask the Arts Commission to consider something. What's gonna happen, and this is not me pitching for this, this is just general. What's gonna happen when the community comes together and says, I'm gonna support the Arts Commission? I support your mission, and I want to do something to support you. So the first one.
Like the Rotary Club did, right? Same thing.
Well, it's not the same thing. My only concern was, is it hot relevant? If, that, when he's gonna come back, see, y'all, I can't talk about it. Because we said that, we said that we can't take presentations, so I can't talk about it.
Well, we can't talk about it.
But, but the, last year, there were people from all over the place that came, so would be.
So, 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 so are we gonna prove it or not? Do you, do you got, what do you guys think? Okay.
Friday night, and all day Saturday, so it was a two-day event.
So I can make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
For three thousand dollars. Okay, can you, can you do it for the record, the way you said? Yeah.
Read it.
Read it.
Yes, read it, just wait. Script it.
Script.
Motion, I make the motion recommending the city council fund, uh.
Ella Fair.
Ella Fair twenty twenty-five. Um, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Y'all want three thousand, what you wanna do?
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other conversation about it?
Everyone in favor?
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Anybody opposed? Okay, let's move on.
All right, move on, yeah. Okay, Candace, we're getting, oh.
Yeah, it's a play, it's a play.
No, 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 I don't think that's bad. I was just thinking, I thought I saw, she had two couple things she submitted. No, just that, or is that just that one?
Okay, Fixin' His Plate, a single project support grant. Fixin' His Plate is a heartwarming, family-friendly stage play that blends music, dancing drama, and comedy to tell the story of a holiday gathering turned upside down after one woman fixes the wrong man's dinner plate. Rooted in themes of love, tradition, and chaos, the ninety-minute production offers a rich theatrical experience for all ages. With local talent both onstage and behind the scenes, the project will serve as a cultural celebration of the Duncanville community, bringing neighbors together through shared storytelling and joyful connection. Um, the, I believe the requested amount is seventy-five, fix, no, it's three thousand, three thousand.
It's a single project support grant, they're requesting three thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion. Recommending the city council fund Fixin' His Plate in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, so, I do wanna say something.
Of course you do.
Okay, okay. So they came and performed at the Juneteenth Celebration, correct?
Yes.
So we spent money on them then. They're asking for three thousand dollars. Um, um, you know, we can give them the whole three thousand dollars, but I think they, they're gonna do the better job for Juneteenth. So I don't know that we need to give them all three, and I love them both, but I'm just being very honest. Like, this is, the thing about it is, we waited a long time for this money, and we just spent money with them, and they could've came better than they came. So I just feel like, is, is I would like to amend that for twenty-five hundred dollars. No, that's just my thought.
Who did the motion? Who did the motion? You did the motion? Who did the motion? You did the motion. Is that a friendly amendment?
I will not accept that for that instance. I love you too, but.
Oh, there's a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Anne.
I just have a counter, um, comment, that I really feel like that Candace and her husband Cedric are proven people in the arts. I think for Juneteenth, she didn't realize she was the only one in the program, and that's why it wasn't more expensive than that. She didn't realize. At least that's what she told me. She acted surprised. But anyway, I, I, uh, think they're marvelously creative. I'm reading her book right now. It's really creative. It's really creative in its language and its concepts, so.
I love the play. I love the fact that it's bringing plays and more diversity to plays in our area, you know? But I also think, I'm just telling you what I think. I think that we've spent money with them or what have you, so that's just my opinion. I wanna make sure it's on the record.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any more discussion?
So she's, she's got to send me a Juneteenth.
Yes.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
You wanna talk about it, huh? Can someone repeat the motion?
I'm trying to divide.
The motion, say the motion again.
Would you please repeat the motion?
I will. I make a motion recommending the city council fund Fixing His Plate in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Okay, and who seconded? There was a second.
Oh, I second that motion.
There's a second, there's a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposition? All right, next.
Hey, Rochelle, your prizes. Alex. Seventy-eight, twenty-six P M. Say twenty-six P M.
You know, this, this, this was all set out a certain way that you did two at the same time and messed the whole thing up.
We're sorry.
I blame Tiffany.
What did I do?
I don't know.
Well, I, you know.
I'm playing with you, Tommy.
Where is the?
And it don't think that I don't love them. I do. I just wanna make sure that we showed it.
Okay, Alex, that's a floor.
Laughter is Good Medicine, a single project support grant. Project summary. Laughter is Good Medicine is a clean comedy event featuring eight semi-professional and/or professional comics, each having twelve to fifteen minutes to perform. Comics are given a strict, a strict definition of clean, i.e. no profane words, no vulgar stories, and no obscene innuendos. Comedy is targeted towards anyone twelve years or older. The total projected budget is three thousand dollars. Requested amount is three thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion. I'm. I make a motion recommending the city council fund, um, this project. Called Laughter is Good Medicine in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have, I wanna ask, is it, is it?
I need you to state who's called the second.
Who's called the second? I'm sorry.
What?
Angela.
Okay, I just need you to recognize the second.
Okay, Angela, so there is a second. There's a motion, there's a second. Any conversation?
It's, I just want to make sure that comedy is art. It's performance.
Performant art.
It's performing arts.
It's performance art, so all these people are artists.
And it's free.
I'm gonna ask that. So is it, is it, is it compliant with our arts funding policy?
Yes.
Is it compliant with hot?
Yes.
Yes.
It could be. It's attracting people to the theater. It's free, it's public.
It says.
And they may still be night, if they're performers or something.
They said they bring fans from other cities.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? There's, there's been a motion, there's a second, is there any discussion? I would really like for someone to chime in on the hot. Is it, everybody thinks it's not compliant?
Amy.
Yeah, Amy's discussing this.
I, I have concerns, but I think, you know, the, the, the proof isn't putting, they do say that they have, um, performers, um, that come from out of town. It's one of those things that. You're, you're thrown the dart, you know? I mean, there's no way to prove that they're going to do that. There's only proof that they're not. They say that they're going to. So if indeed they do, yeah, they meet the hot criteria, but does their, what, does their narrative meet the goal? Then the answer is yes, it does. If, if, if it fails, and I know just from my experience, if, then next year, I'm sorry, but you didn't, you didn't put heads in bets. You know, they're not gonna, then, then we know that for the next time around. Um, you're always thrown the dart. But I do believe that their narrative, unlike some of the others, I didn't feel like it addressed it as much. Do you think their narrative addresses that? Um, that they, they believe that they're going to put heads in bets.
But it happens at night.
Alex.
They're required to, within forty days of, of project completion, to provide a report to the Arts Commission. Failure to report will result in ineligible ability for four grant cycles.
Right.
So that gets them through a fiscal year and that allows for you to make a decision on future things based on that reporting.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second. Did you second it, Angela?
Yes.
Angela did the second. Who did the, who did the motion?
I did. Did I?
Yeah.
Tiffany did the motion. All right, there's motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I did.
All in favor? Any opposition?
Okay, first question in church of Duncanville.
Next. Can you like faster? We're tired.
It's going. We gonna get it over the head on the way to the club.
You really want accurate, you want as accurate notes as I could get, that's clear.
Okay. Oh, Lord, that we don't know.
Okay.
Master's Voice Christmas Concert.
Master's Voice Christmas Concert is submitted as a single project support grant, special Christmas musical event shared with the community at no cost to their benefit and to bene- and to benefit the Duncanville outreach community with non-perishable food item collected.
And no, uh, no detail budget again.
Three thousand dollar projected budget and three thousand dollar requested amount.
So the only question I have for this is one of our, Alex, if you wanna go back to the, um, funding policy, I believe it says religious?
Yeah, it does.
So would this be eligible? And if so, um, is there a way that we, I mean, how does that work? Cause I mean, if it's Christmas music, it's gonna talk about Jesus Christ, okay? And I'll talk about him every day. You know, but I'm saying, I'm asking is, is, would that be, I mean, I don't see a church just doing Jingle Bells. So the question becomes is, um, is there something that we say with the contingency involved this so that we don't break the grant guidelines? Or do we just see it as the entertainment for the community? Tim?
Yeah, so prohibited uses political or religious programming is the line.
That it might flag too.
Religious programming, you know, I could see if it's promoting, but it's, it's, it's more of a festival.
Does the fact it happens in the church, so if, so, so if they were asking for choir singing around the Christmas tree at Christmas time? And so everybody went to the park and they saw it, that's one thing. Is it changing if it happens in the church?
I don't think so.
No.
Cause the Rotary Club used to have their meetings in the church.
Yeah, I know, that doesn't bother me. And I also agree with Tim is it's not, when I look at this as religious, um, they're not religious programming, meaning they're not having a church service and saying.
It's not like a Christmas, maybe the angels or something.
Follow them, they're, they're, it's, and, and once again, this is firsthand knowledge of this, but it's a really cool concert where they're bringing professional people and singing. And they do invite the entire community. Um, they, they market it actually really all over the.
I love it.
They do it whether we pay for it or not.
So you said they market it all over.
They, they have been doing it.
But I do know that it will, that.
I think it brings a lot of people out. I like the fact that, like, like I said, I don't have any problem with it. I just wanna make sure we're, we're in our guidelines.
And you did say they market it all over.
They do, they market it.
So then it's hot compliant?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think it promotes the hot fund situation. We're bringing the tourism, many people visit our city. You know, I think that it's something annual that they do every year and they give, they do the real job, good job, and I think that has to be associated with the things that are going, going well in our community is a plus. So I, I have a motion to say.
Alex, pull up a second.
Do they?
Uh, describe the purpose and artistic vision of the proposed project, nationally recognized singing group from Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Yeah, and so, and Mac, Mac just found a line in there. Do you wanna read it?
It was what he just.
Okay.
That, that covers your hotel.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any second, is, hold on, wait. Any more discussion?
I make a motion recommending the city council fund the First Church, Christian Church of, um, Duncanville Master Voice Christmas Concert in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Okay, wait, yes.
Could you amend it to two thousand?
And we don't have a budget again.
No, I'm not amending that.
Second. And if I can speak to it, yeah, second the motion, so we can discuss. But also, um, right, they didn't have a detailed budget. So I just wanna make aware, you know, if we're gonna ask for it for one, we should ask for it for everybody.
Didn't, did we ask for it with the Rotary doing the thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
So you wanna make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if we could amend the, amend the motion to state that we fund them in the amount of three thousand dollars. With, with the, what if we send them.
To include a detailed budget.
On the contingency that's a bad detailed budget.
Yeah, provide a detailed budget. I love that.
So, Tim. We don't really have a policy, but I think anyone submitting a grant, especially where hot funds are concerned, should be encouraged to, to, um, host their people in the local hotels. Like if there's a group coming from Tulsa, you could host them in your homes. Or you could invite them to stay in the Duncanville hotels.
Write that on your sheet of paper. That's a policy. That's a good, that's a good idea. So we have, that's a real good idea. So we have, we have, we have a motion with a friendly amendment. We have a second?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
No.
That's a great point. Tim, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, we'll wait.
Saying it's not our.
No. It's not it.
Okay.
Okay, and opposition?
I'm not the here, the opposition, why?
Yeah, well, how could it do this?
I'm not sure.
Cause what's up? The guy, the, this is the opportunity for that to keep, I use a virtual kid.
Six.
Okay, let's move on.
What is the next, Village Tech Schools?
We tied over my place. It's a lot of money.
So Village Tech is basically, uh, I like this program. This is the mentor program. They're, they're basically creating a, um, programming series that allows them to go around, I mean, the, the high school students go out around and, um.
Hey, Alex, can you read for the record, please? Otherwise Tiffany's gonna do it.
Look, we got. Twenty-one minutes.
Uh, Mentor Moments, Single Project Support Grant, Village Tech Schools, would like to host seniors and individuals within the Duncanville community to participate in an opportunity called Mentor Moments. The key students can share their knowledge and collaboratively work with seniors and individuals with mobility impairments to create an, an art piece together. The art piece or pieces could then be displayed in public spaces in Duncanville, such as the Community Garden or City Hall. The projected budget is four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and the requested amount is four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Make a motion recommending that the city council fund Village Tech Mentor Moments project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Who's the second?
I, I counted Mary Ann Pepper for you, then. Uh, any discussion?
Just the logic of the hot funds.
All right, is the hot fund compliant?
Um, they wanna put up twenty-five pieces of art in different places in the city that, that makes it so that people can come from all their other cities to see all of the, uh, pieces of art or the sculpture of the.
Okay, is that compliant with hot? Any discussion on that, that it would not be? Tim?
It would bring fans. Friends down here are watching.
Is it compliant with their funding policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I stuck with three thousand because it's a single grant first time.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Okay.
Uh, wait, did you, Sarah? All opposed?
Ev- everybody else is, okay, thank you.
Um, Sarah, was it, were you concerned about the policy or hot or was it?
I think it was like the hot, I just didn't really understand that part, so.
Let's move on.
Musical Performance, Single Project Support Grant. Uh, the band is a jazz band that performs popular jazz standards and songs from the great American Songbook. Band members are made up of two Duncanville, uh, two of Duncanville's own, plus other professional musicians from the Dallas area. Uh, here is the budget, total budget, the total budget and the budgeted request is one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. A breakdown is included. Uh, this is not one of the ones where I was able to confirm the reservation. There were two others that were submitted that I knew that it was at a public space and I wanted to confirm the reservation. Uh, there's some photos that were submitted. This is the band.
Oh.
Discussions, motions. Okay, does it comport with, uh, our funding policy? What did you start then?
Yes.
Does it?
Uh, I think it, it's hot because the band, some of the members are made up, uh, from the Dallas area, so outside of the city.
Okay, so, what do y'all think? Is it hot? Does it meet the hot department?
It brings people in from outside.
And it's at night.
I like that. I definitely think it's hot too, just because, um, I think it's good stuff.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Angela?
I make a motion recommending the city council fund, um, the.
Musical Performance is the title.
Musical Performance, Gerald, Gerald flies in the amount of one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
I said no.
Sarah, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Is there any opposition? Unanimous?
Please bear with me because you're getting ahead and I'm not.
Yeah, Alex is.
Yeah.
Yeah, could we have that running count?
I'm trying, but you keep moving so fast. I can't get the math done.
Um, all right, is anybody concerned at the speed at which we're moving?
No.
You're, I think you're around thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars that you've committed based on the.
Right, nobody got ten thousand.
First three was six thousand dollars, the next four, four came to fourteen thousand dollars. With this, it was ten thousand one hundred and eighty-five. I believe that brings it to thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-five. And you are now to your remaining.
Painting in the Park.
Five. You're on Painting in the Park. So Painting in the Park is a single project support grant, uh, just a reminder because I feel like that has served you all well. Single project support grants for, the funding limit is up to three thousand dollars for first-time applicants. Everybody who's applying tonight is a first-time applicant. Painting in the Park is a vibrant outdoor experience where guests can relax and unleash their creativity while painting and sipping in a beautiful park setting. The event features live music, creating a laid-back artistic atmosphere, perfect for connecting with others and enjoying nature. It's a very detailed budget, uh, very small print. I apologize. The, uh, the request amount is.
Two thousand.
One thousand dollars.
Three thousand. And they said sometime in the fall of twenty-three dollars.
So.
Very last page.
Um, we have a motion on the table.
Make a motion recommending that the city council fund the Painting in the Park project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Perry seconded. Um, I have a question. Are we being, and I don't, I'm, it's a legitimate question. If they apply at the wrong grant, are we being generous by changing it for them or should the, or should that be rejected?
No, I think this is the first time and I think that, I think that we should give them grace.
Okay.
Give ourselves grace.
So I just wanna.
I, I think we need to give the grace because we haven't had that education part of that, it says in our policy.
So the policy does state that we're gonna have an education component for this and we haven't had it. So we're all doing this, including applicants for the first time.
Like, I think like this time next year, you guys are gonna be so good at this because you went through three or four cycles. And I think that in the next eighteen months, what's gonna happen is the, the policies and stuff are gonna be into, you know, everything gonna be better, you know? But I think that, I think we're gonna.
And I think, I think it's nice to give them some grace and change it for them because they wanna do the project and they say we're offering them something. They don't have to do it. They don't have to take it. But we're at least offering them something.
Yes.
So is it, does it comport with our funding policy?
Yes.
Is like, is it hot?
Yes.
It could be, yes.
Is there any concerns about it not being hot?
No.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? And, so Anne? So more discuss, yeah, Tim? So there is a second?
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask, I mean, this is, are they proposing putting on an event? It, it sounds like it's, it's an event in Lakeside, or?
Yes. Yes.
In Lakeside.
Yes, and people can come out and paint.
Right. And they're, and they put ten thousand together because we can imagine that to put an event on like in July or any of those others, you know, whatever they need all that stuff. Can we, uh, the other, the other question I know, and I think I've asked this before, is like, how do we know when they comply? We give them the money that they don't comply. I know there's avenues and things like that.
Would you read the policy on that?
Will they have to provide a recap and stuff for this? That's one of the,
Yeah, but Alex, would you, cause he asked a question about, um, uh, how they're gonna follow up. Would you just read what's in the policy?
Uh, so yes, they are granted the money in advance of the event rather than it be, that was one thing that you all were very clear about. You did not want this to be a, uh,
And read the part about the,
reimbursement. And, um, so, and this is for the purposes of if they want to come back. That's one of the points of this, and also to get reporting data. So the grantee's responsibility is submit a final report within forty days of project completion. Include documentation of project outcomes, financial details, attendance and public engagement, tours or hub or hotel impact if applicable. Uh, failure to report will result in ineligibility for four grant cycles, which would be the equivalent of a fiscal year.
Is that sufficient?
Well, you know, I just, I guess in all of these, it's, it's, um, you know, if we don't give them ten thousand, I mean, they'll have to find their,
If they can't use it, they can refuse it.
Yeah, if they don't wanna use it, they can refuse it. I like that.
Um, yeah, Matt?
My one concern is that there's not a date. So if you could get them to nail down a specific,
So a friendly amendment that they provide us a date?
So she made, so, Angela made a motion. I think you made a motion.
Yeah.
So he wants to make a friendly amendment.
They just said fall of twenty-twenty-five, so fall, I figure, and August, September.
Fall's the next month though.
Yeah.
Wonder if they don't do it fall. They didn't give us some money, right?
Then they don't, then they don't comply with what they've said. Now, my, my, one of the issues that I had was that I really don't have an individual. We just have downtown gallery, art museum.
Well, I think, I read that and I thought, that's strange because we don't have, it's Dunkin'ville. But I think what they're doing is making a general statement about these kinds of events. It's generic. It's not specific to Dunkin'.
It is, uh, so the, the vendor packet is downtown gallery and museum of art. That is, who is applying for it. And they are located two thousand south main.
Are they a nonprofit?
Didn't say that they was a five oh three.
But they're applying for a single, so they don't have to be exclusively a non.
Oh, and so they, they, they didn't qualify for three thousand dollars anyway.
Yeah, well, they wanted ten thousand.
Yeah, but they, they don't qualify for ten thousand. They're a single, I mean, it's a single, They, they don't even qualify for what they have on.
Two hundred south main.
Okay.
All right, say that, say that again.
So I'm saying is, is that they are asking us for ten thousand dollars. However, um, kind of like Angela said earlier, should we switch to half case for the, they only qualify, I mean, for what they're asking for is a single event. So the max day will be required, I mean, apply for the first year is three thousand, correct, Amy? And they can qualify for ten thousand the next time they apply, right? If they successfully do this event. So right now, the motion is on the table. Angela was proposed that we give them three thousand dollars for this event. And then somebody said, who is it?
So Anne, I think you seconded?
And then you said in life that they give us a date.
Yeah, but she didn't.
Hey, Alex, did you write down who seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. That they call themselves the downtown gallery and museum of art. Why don't we know about the space or something?
Oh yeah, that's not,
It's in the flower shop.
They just moved it. We've talked about it.
Oh, we have.
Okay.
She has, right there across,
You're welcome.
Right across the street from the theater. That's there.
Yeah.
How is that, that flower shop?
So are we doing it or not?
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it? Is it so, yes?
I, project project which they're thinking about, it looks, uh, things seem very inflated and they're talking about pre-sketched campuses, campuses and two hundred people, which seems low. But it looks like they're putting on a big event. And it's just, the, the figures all seem skewed to me. I guess I'm supporting the three thousand.
Or they're giving the three thousand. Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, I don't know. I've got the attitude about the pre-sketch. I'm, that's just for the record. Just for the record, sorry.
All right, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Don't be pressured, don't be pressured.
I feel like sometimes you gotta let people see what they can do with it. They do the job and keep doing it.
It's, okay, there, there, any opposition?
No.
No, okay, let's move on.
Rhythms of Culture Celebration Through Music and Voice. Rhythms of Culture is a live performing arts event featuring music, spoken word, and cultural storytelling led, led by Kalen Hayes. A rising voice in contemporary performance. This unique event will highlight the power of sound, rhythm, and identity while offering an inspiring experience that's open to the public at the Dunkin'ville Amphitheater. Uh, total projected budget is nine thousand three hundred dollars.
It doesn't say what they're asking for.
So I, because of the fact that they did not, uh, separate out, because this was one of those that was not sent through the form, this was sent by email as this, I went ahead deduced that what the request was, was the nine thousand three hundred dollars because there was no, nothing that pulled that out or made a separate request for a dollar amount other than this.
So this is a single event?
This is a single event though.
Yes.
So they qualify for three?
Yeah.
Um, is it, does it comport with our funding policy?
Yes.
Uh, is it hot eligible?
Yeah, it is actually. And I like the fact that it's, what I like the most about some of these applications and especially, I mean, and it's even in this one is, um, it's expression, um, they're using, I love the fact that they're using music as the art, but they're also making certain that they're using local, like the Dunkin'ville Amphitheater. I think it's good that it's free. I think it's great that it's in a public space. So that's what I like.
So for the record, it's called a co-hop dance.
Well, that's, well, I was gonna say, hopefully the city council will make sure that they, it's, it's a big deal. And it is, it's named after police officers who were, who were filled in, alive duty, but, um, yeah, I wanna make sure that they, they get the name right.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion recommending the city council fund the rhythms of culture, a celebration through music and voice project in the amount of three thousand.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, there's this, uh, Tiffany seconded, uh, Tim?
Did we get any, um, any Instagram or anything from Kalen Haynes, who's the artist that would be performing primarily? Do we have any idea what she's?
I did not dig in on her Instagram.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious like on her following, but also too like the other artists that are gonna be part in this lineup. I'm just curious like if they're local or like what kind of audience that would be premium, you know? Like are they from other cities? Are they other states?
Did you wanna make a friendly amendment requiring that they're local artists or faraway artists or?
Yeah, just remember a lot of people that we use have not been local, so just remember that.
Yeah.
Cause if we require them to use local, then that means we need to use,
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't think it was an issue. I was just wondering like if it was gonna bring people, regardless if they're local or not. I, I don't have a preference, but.
Uh, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Be nervous. Moving on.
Rhythms of, Rhythms of the Heartbeat Dance Experience. This is an annual arts program grant for a nonprofit. This event will feature various dance forms to promote health and wellness among our community members. Dance is an excellent means of cardiac engagement for all ages. Pink Diamonds has a mission of providing health awareness and exercise events that are free and open to the public. A full detailed budget, um, fifty-eight hundred is the total budget. The amount requested is three thousand dollars. And this is for, um, the grant category is for,
Single.
A annual arts grant. But only asked for three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, and again, you know, our policy asks that we do a lot of education. We've done that.
I, I will say that this particular applicant, um, had some challenges with the form, the, the form for whatever reason was a challenge on the day that she was applying. And then she went through the extra effort of copying and pasting, putting it all into work. So that could be part of the reason why the application is submitted like this.
Uh, discussion, motions?
I really like this because it's a couple of things. Um, one of the, I think the dance is, I, I love the dance first of all. And I think it's also, I love the fact that it's keeping people active in our community and it's also for a good cause. So I think it kinda ties in that community engagement with us also showing that we care about the community. Um, and I think that it's really would be a single, um, event, even though it's an annual event that they have. They're only asking us for a single support for this one event that they had throughout the year, correct? Um, so I do think it's, it brings people from all over. Um, I think there's over, there was like maybe three hundred people that attended last year and I think when they first started off.
Two hundred, yeah, two hundred back in April.
Okay, two hundred. So it's, I know it was a couple hundred versus like first couple times, I think it was like ten or twenty, thirty. So they've grown it and there's so many people from Dallas that come and Fort Worth and stuff, so I think it makes us look really good. And I think that, um, incorporating the, um, arts part as far as for dance and stuff, I think that's really good.
Uh, just like that, this is one of the ones that was, it, it shows that it's in a public space. I did follow up and she has reserved that space. That space is reserved and already committed.
So let me, let me ask the commission, is it, is it eligible for a public funding policy?
Yes.
Okay, is it hot?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion, discussion?
I make a motion recommending the city council fund the rhythm of the heartbeat dance experience in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Tiffany seconded. Any more discussion? You doing good, Anne? Okay. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm not opposing. I'm just abstaining, only because I'm a member of the group. So I'm staying. But I'll be there. I'm just abstaining.
Carry on.
Yo, we got one more application. Is mine out too? Y'all better do that. Let's go. Our last application for our first round of,
Tiffany, you're the one who needs to talk to us.
Nobody talks before the beep, but you run.
That's actually valid. All right.
One second.
She's really young and,
Okay, Superfly Group, uh, Superfly, Superfly Studio is submitted as a single project support grant. Saw that reaction. Superfly is a hip-hop based arts initiative that empowers youth in communities through dance, creativity, and cultural expression. Rooted in authenticity and healing, it creates safe spaces for connection, growth, and celebration. The total project budget is twenty thousand dollars. The requested amount is twenty thousand dollars. Wait a minute, wait a minute, is it fifteen thousand?
Yeah, it's fifteen.
Oh, total project budget, I apologize. It is, and it is correct on my form. I typed it wrong there. But I did that probably close to the end of last night's meeting. I, that, I, I probably did it.
No, this says twelve thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's yours.
Well, no, the, 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 the total project budget is twenty thousand dollars, but it's fifteen thousand.
They've added it up to twenty.
All right, is there any discussion on this?
Um, isn't there?
Oh, wait a minute. She is absolutely right. There is two, uh, uh, she points out that there is fifteen thousand here. And the amount on the document for the budget shows requested amount twenty thousand dollars.
It's a single project support grant, so it's three thousand dollars. Thank you for fair presentation.
And where is the old rail station?
Two O two West Center.
Right there.
It's right across from the track.
Across from the Rice Church.
The Rice Church.
That's where the pickleball courts are. That's where the pickleball,
I need to go see those pickleball courts.
You need to call,
So I cannot play.
Have you played?
I do, I have played.
All right, we have a motion on the table?
Motion, okay. I make a motion recommending that the city council fund the Superfly Studio project in the amount of three thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
We have a second, Tiffany seconded. Okay, so is this complying with our arts funding policy?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I feel like it's a commercial venture. I mean, they, they're doing performances maybe, but it looks like it's, to me, it's commercial.
There is an admission fee of ten dollars, just.
Does that, the, the, so what are the funding policies with tickets? We don't, we don't have any, we don't have any, And so businesses can apply.
This, uh, gives a ra, uh, range of dates. Is there more than one event?
I was right just now, remember?
Uh, Matt has a question. It says there's a range of dates.
So does that mean there's a multiple events? Are they asking really, did they fill out the,
Classics, I mean, it's not.
Application, uh, kind of annual arts program.
They're gonna have several different events, at least the way they said through performances, they've got workshops, pop-up events.
That's why they're asking.
So that's why they're asking.
Class, workshop, and events.
I think they just didn't fill out the right one.
You want us to talk about this?
Well, yeah, cause we changed the others from annual to single because it was one event, but this is for multiple events. It's like a whole season from September eighth to December twentieth. Why wouldn't we just change it to the annual arts program grant?
I agree.
But it's not a series of presentations, it's classes. It's, it's teaching and training. And then they have events, but it doesn't, yeah, it's not.
No, it's an individual. It's not, it's not, it, uh,
So they can't, they're going to sing.
What are they eligible for? Just the single?
Cause they're individual artists now that are nonprofit.
Yes.
Okay.
We're trying to help them a little bit.
So what do you want to add?
So, we just, I mean, thank you. Let me just think about it. We, um, it's just, uh, an artist is able to afford a space. They got a space over there in their complex there and they wanna do art stuff there. And I guess that's, that's the commission. We wanna support that kind of stuff. That's all.
Okay, valid. Any other discussions or, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, Tiffany seconded. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, wait, any more discussion, concerns?
Could we just have a line item again, what our, what our total is so far? Are we good?
We're more than good.
Before this, you are at thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-five, uh, based on Mike Dunequid typing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
All right. Wait, you don't wanna take a picture?
Any opposition?
True. Are pants up?
Oh.
What?
No.
Hold on. No, 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 any opposition?
Oh, no, no.
Tiffany.
Oh. I was taking a picture, more proud of us.
Okay.
Did you do against? Did you do against? Do against, because there were hands up when you said against though.
Okay.
But it's just we were posing for the picture.
We were posing for a selfie. Um, so we were, okay, any against, any opposition? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, Duncanville Arts Commission, for us is the last one against. It's nine oh eight, business is adjourned.
The exciting thing is that there will be arts happening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know what I like about this whole process is, is you don't never know where these organizations will be in five to ten years because we're playing seats, you know what I mean?